Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the June 13, 2023, meeting of the Carver Planning Board. We will call to meeting to order at 7:04 PM. If we would all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Let's see. Our first order of business is a public hearing continued on the application of Matthew Malone. Oh, please.
Actually, the first thing on our agenda this evening is above the public hearing notice, the Carver Stormwater Management Program update. We have a speaker here, Gabrielle Belfit, who is going to do a brief presentation in order to keep the town in compliance with its NIPD's permit, National Discharge Pollution Elimination System, if I got the letters in the right order.
Excellent.
Tom, you have some slides?
Do.
Do you mind if I sit?
Please, no, please sit. Make yourself comfortable and identify yourself for the record.
Yes, my name is Gabrielle Belfit. I'm a senior environmental scientist with Ty &amp; Bond. We've been working with the town for the past five years to implement Carver Stormwater Management Program. And my purpose tonight is to give you some highlights of what was accomplished during fiscal year '23, and specifically focus on the deliverables for Buzzard's Bay Estuaries Program Stormwater Management Grant that was provided to the town to help it with compliance with the NIPD's program. So I'm going to just want to bring, I just want to do a slide here to kind of bring everybody up to speed, make sure you kind of understand the background a little bit before I dive right into the specifics. So the next slide, please. So we're going to be discussing stormwater. Make sure we understand that we're talking about the federal EPA permit that addresses stormwater pollution from municipally-owned urbanized areas in storm. Oh.
Thank you, thank you.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
My taker is taking minutes from someplace more comfortable than here.
Oh.
God bless her.
Okay, all right. So we are talking about rainwater falling on paved streets, lawns, parking lots, sidewalks, which becomes polluted as it picks up trash, oil, fertilizers, sediment, sand, and bacteria. And the premise is that the more impervious surfaces, the more stormwater runoff is generated, and the more impacts will occur to sensitive receiving water bodies. Next slide. So Carver is regulated under EPA's Small MS4 Stormwater Program. The MS4 is the Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. This program is jointly administered by both EPA and DEP. As I mentioned before, this program applies to the urbanized areas within the town of Carver. This is mostly the northern part of Carver, and then a small area to the south. And the MS4, that Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System, is municipally-owned and operated roads, drainage systems, municipal streets, catch basins, curbs, gutters, dishes, man-made channels, and storm drains. And again, all within the urbanized area. So if it's outside, it doesn't count. Next slide, please. Just this is some terrible detail, but what's important to note is that we're in the fifth year of this permit that was originally issued, 2016. It didn't become effective until 2018, and it actually expired in 2022, but has been administratively continued. So we are going to, we are finishing Permit Year Five, and in July, we'll be entering Permit Year Six. Next slide. Carver has several documents online that if you're interested to take a look, you can see the details of the Stormwater Management Program. This documents how the town is reducing discharge of pollutants to the maximum extent practicable, and covers four minimum control measures: public education, public participation, illicit discharge, construction site runoff controls, stormwater management in new development and redevelopment, and good housekeeping and pollution prevention. So the town has to meet certain requirements in each one of these minimum control measures. In addition, it has to meet specific requirements for discharges to impaired water bodies. Next slide there. I'm just going to, I'm going to barely look at this. This, if you look in the details, provides some of the bullets for what happened over the past five years in each one of the minimum compliance measured categories. What, next slide. What we want to focus tonight is what happened in Permit Year Five, and specifically what the town accomplished under the Buzzard's Bay National Estuary Program Grant. So annual requirements are something that the town does every year. It provides messaging. It is tracking illicit discharges and notifying responsible parties. The town cleans the catch basin, sweeps the streets, and inspects its structures or best management practices. Specific requirements for impaired waters is additional seasonal messaging. There are messages that have to go out in the spring about fertilizer, in the summer about pet waste, and in the fall about leaf litter. And then this second task, to do a best management practice inventory and assessment. This is one of the topics that is covered under the grant. The additional Minimum Control Measure Five requirement that is covered under the grant is a review of the town codes that cover street design and parking lot guidelines, as well as local regulations that might have an impact on allowing green infrastructure to occur. Next slide. I just kind of real quickly wanted to show you this whole impaired water body concept. So we just kind of put why we're doing this and, you know, shed a little bit of light on it. So this is showing the Taunton River watershed, Taunton River watershed to the north of Carver, and then everything south of there is the Buzzard's Bay watershed with, sorry, go back, with the Winkinko River sub watershed all the way to the south, and in the middle there is the Weeweeantik sub watershed. So the Taunton River watershed is impaired for nitrogen and has a TMDL for bacteria. The Buzzard's Bay watershed is impaired for both nitrogen and phosphorus. In particular, the Winkinko sub watershed has phosphorus impairments. Within the, now go on to the next one. Within the town itself, here's the urbanized area, sort of splitting up the north and the south. Those colored water bodies show the impaired water bodies within the town, but there's only one that is impaired for phosphorus, which is Crane Brook Pond. Do I have that right? Crane Brook, Crane Brook Pond? I want to say Crane Brook Bog, but it's not, it's Pond. That is impaired for phosphorus, and all the rest that are colored are impaired for something else. It might be mercury, it might be, you know, plants, but the only one regulated would be an impaired water body in the urbanized area, which Crane Brook Bog, Crane Brook Pond is not. So go on to the next slide. So those supplemental BMPs I mentioned, having to do with impaired water body requirements, are the annual time messaging, stormwater management BMPs optimized for nitrogen and phosphorus removal, additional good housekeeping, standard operating procedures to be implemented on town properties, and extra sweeping in those urbanized areas. Okay, next slide.
If I could interject, are we going to talk about the posting we just put up on the website about fertilizer management? Is that part of your?
That is one of them. That was, there you go.
I didn't want to jump the gun, but I want to make sure.
That is, that is, that is the spring message that just went up about fertilizer. And the next one to go up is management of pet waste. And the town has a whole public education website with lots of different articles to read about different ways to protect water quality through the Operation and Maintenance Plan's webpage, I believe. That's where it all originates. So we're going to talk about the Best Management Practice retrofit analysis, which was done under this Buzzard's Bay grant. So this analysis, the permit states that the municipality shall identify and rank at least five town-owned sites that could be retrofitted with best management practices to reduce the frequency, volume, and pollutant loads through the reduction of impervious area. So examples would be modifying parking lots, building, maintenance yards, and this also could be something just like rights of ways, or, you know, ends of cul-de-sacs, as well as outfalls and swales. So the steps that the town took to complete this retrofit analysis is first doing a complete inventory of all town-owned parcels in 2021. We then looked at all of the developed ones that have buildings on them, you know, from schools to DPW to fire stations, et cetera. And we completed a desktop analysis that looked at all of these developed parcels and looked at a number of factors which would influence its ability to provide a good site for installing an advanced stormwater treatment system to filter out pollutants, as well as provide an opportunity for public education. So sites that were kind of in the public eye got additional credits on the ranking system. We're in the process of putting the final touches on this BMP retrofit analysis, but I did want to bring to your attention tonight the fact that the stormwater management team reviewed the top 10 parcels that were recommended through our initial ranking. We then went out and we did site visits for these top parcels, and the committee chose the top five parcels, which we have completed conceptual designs and a preliminary budget. So I'm going to quickly walk through those.
I can just interject for a moment. That stormwater management team or staff?
Yes.
Myself, conservation agent, DPW.
Board of Health.
Board of Health. So the folks who are in the day-to-day business of dealing with town regulation.
Wait, that's the Stormwater Management Task Force is their official name. So, and they have been active with meeting every single year to advise and review deliverables under this grant. So the first site was the new parcel at 44 Lakeview that the town acquired, which the idea was that a proposed nature center would be there. So it's, you know, it's an old building with really not too much going on, but the fact that it's going to be a nature center had a lot of opportunities there. And some constraints really was just that we didn't really know where the septic system was, which we did find out. So you can see in the next slide, oh, the, these are combined. So yeah, right next door, we have the senior center, where we have got very poor conditions in the parking, a lot of erosion on the back of the hill. The roof drainage on the roof itself is just very partial. There's a lot of ponding at the bottom of the hill in front of where the old tennis courts were. So this, you know, there was a lot of opportunities for improvements here with just a few constraints having to do with some slope issues. Next slide. So this is showing both parcels together because it was, there was just kind of too much going on, but it's showing the use of sediment forbays and bio-retention areas, which is a very much a superficial kind of rain garden look that you landscape and use plants to absorb the nutrients coming off of the stormwater. So it can be a very attractive landscape feature that's added, both at the Hatwood Senior Center, as well as located further to the north, that green area, bio-retention area that is actually on the 44 Lakeview parcel that will be located adjacent to walkways that are going out to the edge of Sampson's Pond. The primary, oops, go back one, the, sorry.
That's me trying to use the pointer to point things out.
That's okay. The kind of orangey area there in 44 Lakeview shows up.
I'm not going to touch a thing.
That's okay. Normally, it would be me doing this, so. That's porous pavement there, and then there is rain barrels that are proposed in addition. So kind of minimalist, but there's just great opportunities for putting signage and kiosks about what low-impact development is. Why are we interested in capturing rain from the roof and, you know, creating like a rain garden as part of that? And I think there's also a lot of opportunities for synergy between the nature center and the senior center for getting, you know, participation from folks who have more experience about gardening and, you know, natural, you know, resource, you know, kind of, kind of old-school ways of doing things to interact with, you know, with youth programs at the nature center. So anyway, we think that the public education is going to be a really big boost that makes this a very attractive location. Next slide. The next site was the middle and high schools, where it was very, very obvious, there's a number of areas in poor condition with erosion, flooding during storm events, a lot of direct discharge to wetlands that border the property, and overall, that pavement is in very poor condition. It's original to the construction of the high school, I believe. We have a very high water table there, as well as any retrofits are going to be expensive, so funding was, you know, definitely, you know, going to be an issue. We also need to have better utility plans in doing our concepts. But we identified four different areas in the high school, and then the next slide, we just focus on doing some retrofits actually at two of those areas. One of them is alongside the driving, the driveway at the southeastern corner of the property, where there's a very steep slope, there's a lot of erosion and direct discharge straight to a wetland back there with no treatment. So we're proposing a sediment forbay, some bio-retention to filter and treat water and to repair the erosion along the parking area. Then there's a series of bio-retention areas to the southwest that are taking runoff from both the parking, the driveway and the parking area. And that area to the left is an area where there's significant flooding and ponding of water, so it's actually a public safety issue there that wants to correct that stormwater and then treat it before discharging it, which eventually this would go off-site to wetlands that I believe are to the west. But right now, any stormwater discharge there is receiving zero treatment at all. So there is a ton of impervious surface here, and we feel that treating it is meeting the intent of the permit, so it would be a good project. Next site is the fire station onto the north of Carver next to the landfill, and this is a small site, and you would think, well, you know, okay, it's right now, stormwater is running off into the woods, you know, that's not too bad. But if we think about it, there's very few sites that are town-owned that are actually in the Taunton River, the Taunton River watershed, where there is that nitrogen impairment. So this does represent an opportunity to address that watershed, where you could do a rain garden, you can do the concept drawing, Tom. You can do like a rain garden retention basin to the north there of the parking area, north of the septic system, and make it, you know, attractive and capture that sheet flow, but treat it before you're discharging it. So this one, I think we could get some benefit, some public exposure, but for, you know, kind of a lower price tag. Next one, I think the last one, is the DPW garage, which is, has the only treatment here is a couple of catch basins right now that are right on either side of the roadway, and the rest of it is sheet flow that goes off onto the woods. And why is this a good site for doing a retrofit? Number one, you have a lot of uses going on at the site that are of higher potential pollutant types. So chemical storage, sand storage, just a lot of materials being stored there that are generating, you know, sediments. And so we are recommending, next slide, please. We are recommending several retrofits to capture and treat stormwater here. We'll be using water quality units here to make sure to filter out a lot of those very small particulates that are coming from all of the storage of sand, salt, and other materials. So you have in your packets that I handed out, just kind of summary sheets, and the good news for the town is that, or the bad news is that the town has to install one BMP within six years of the permit effective date, which would be next year. So that's kind of the bad news. The good news is that the town can take credit for any work that was done, starting from the beginning of the effective date of the permit. So the town intends to do that. So they are going to take credit for improvements that have been made to the ballfields, parking area, they're going to take credit for the fire station stormwater upgrades. And so your list of five parcels, you know, you actually have a list of seven. So you have seven projects, two of them have already been done. So the town is buying itself actually two years, so before it has to implement something. So, moving on, the next part of the BBN grant was doing a local code review report, and we looked at parts of the code that affect creation of impervious cover related to your street design and parking lot guidelines, and evaluated the local code that determines how feasible green infrastructure is. So Tom took a look at these codes, and he used this massive spreadsheet, which I'm just going to show you. It's got a lot of colors here, and it's very many pages. It's a Mass Audubon developed this tool that enabled the community to systematically review its regulations and how they measured up against kind of national standards in a number of different areas that allow, promote, encourage green roofs, infiltration practices, water harvesting, and he looked at subdivision rules, special permit, zoning, and general bylaws. Here is your corrected, here's four copies, they're updated, so those are really hard to print out.
Excellent. And if I can just editorialize, we didn't impress anybody with what's in our current regulations regarding this matter.
Yeah.
So we have some work to do in town.
Here are four copies of the report, with our recommendations. I'm going to just present two slides with a very quick summary of some of the highlights of those recommendations, because it is one of those documents that there's no way to talk about it, but to get down into the weeds about it, and this isn't really the place to do it. So just the next slide, the local code subdivision regulations. We kind of, we've just picked like four things here, there's probably about 20 recommendations we made, but thinking about cul-de-sacs and using cul-de-sacs and eliminating any type of impediment to flow in the middle of a cul-de-sac, to allow that to act as a rain garden and promote infiltration. Minimizing street widths to nine feet for one lane, or 18 for two lanes for residential driveways, and allowing common driveways for up to four residential units. That's a very simple one. Removing curbing requirements, allowing curb breaks and open drainage. Considering preferring the use of permeable pavement for sidewalks. And that's one that does come with operation requirements, maintenance, excuse me, maintenance requirements. So it has, you have to be careful if you're doing that in a subdivision, that you make sure that that maintenance, because permeable pavement needs to be vacuumed. And then allowing and encouraging green roofs, disconnecting downspouts, and rainwater harvesting. So those are just a handful of things from the subdivision rules and regulations that we identified. And then in the zoning bylaws, we are encouraging that the town consider requiring a minimization of clearing and requiring at least 75% native planting. Allowing and requiring LID bio-retention within parking areas, potentially at a minimum of 10% of the interior area. Considering allowing dead ends with common drives for two to four units. Encouraging use of LID in site design, and requiring a stormwater management operation and maintenance plan in site applications and review process. So I couldn't go into any way, there's no way to discuss the details that we provided. But the next steps that we're going to do is Tom is going to review the recommendations, and we're going to meet with Tom about how, you know, there is a timeline for implementation on these. So what, you know, what does the town feel that they, you know, how do they want to address it? And you might suggest a subcommittee or something to, from the planning board to go through them.
Correct. And in the instance of subdivision regulations, that's considerably easier to address because subdivision regulations are changed by the planning board in a public hearing. Obviously, zoning bylaw changes have to go to town meeting, there's quite a bit considerable more leeway to that. So as we look at these opportunities and those things, we can talk about, you know, where are the opportunities to make some of those changes, but to make some more immediate headway, subdivision regulations are the place to look at things like that. And in the longer game, zoning bylaws as well.
So thank you. I'm sorry I took a few minutes longer, but I really very, very much appreciate your listening to this and letting it get recorded. And the website has materials where we post things on the Operation and Maintenance website.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you.
Substantial changes, Mr. Bott?
Some of the things, let me just a second.
They all look reasonable.
So some things that are fairly straightforward for lots of places, like pavement width, pavement width for streets, but the Carver's Fire Department has probably more significant requirements for pavement widths due to the nature of the operation than it would be in other places. And we talk about reducing pavement widths, lane diets, these are the sort of things that operationally have to work for our public safety folks. So there's always a trade-off in looking at those sort of things. So as I go through, you know, those recommendations, things we looked at, I made sort of a running list of things that have the potential, but once again, anything we want to change, we want to make sure that we're reaching out to our partners and other departments to make sure that those things don't create issues for their, but for the most part, the more asphalt you can get rid of, the less stormwater you have to deal with, the less of the site you have to dig up to deal with those sort of things. those sort of things. Obviously, things like pervious pavement don't require a subdivision or a catch basin, a detention or retention pond, but they're pressier to build and a bit more atypical to maintain. So there's a, there's a number of things we can look at, and well, most of these things will be up on our website, including the recommendations, and we'll be walking through some of those in-house, and then likely can bring some to the planning board for some changes to subdivision regulations. Because there's a few things in our subdivision regulations that need to be addressed anyhow. So I'd like to do some big picture sort of thing and have a hearing, which may take place over several meetings, to walk through and look at potential changes to subdivision regulations.
And I expect parking lot regulations and parking lot landscaping and design is...
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, and most of the folks in my profession think that most uses are overparked as it is, and so one of those things that makes it, you know, very easy to deal with is look at your parking regulations, which are part of zoning, and look at reducing those, because for the most part, we think a lot of those places are sort of overparked.
Excellent. Thoughts, Andy? Mr. Gleins?
Looking forward to some future projects in town.
Excellent. All right. All right, back to the business at hand. Public hearing continued on the application of Matthew Malone requesting a special permit pursuant to Section 532230 of the Carver zoning bylaws located at 309 Tremont Street, Union One in Carver, Mass. Assessors map 95-3-1 to operate a retail store and service motocross, dirt bikes, ATVs, street bikes, Harleys, snowmobile, jet skis, and UTVs repair shop in a general business district.
How are we doing?
Excellent. Nice to see you back again, Mr. Malone.
Hey, good to see you guys.
We received some information from the Fire Department, and I saw that the Board was furiously trying to catch up with, catch up with it before the meeting. We took a site walk, we saw you had integrated secondary containment systems, which was Has a copy of this been provided to Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Excellent. All right.
And has a copy of the draft decision as well.
All right. All right. Yes, please.
Can I ask one question?
Absolutely.
You know, I noticed that there's one handicap parking spot, but I think what you need there, and I didn't see it, and I'm sorry if I'm incorrect, is a sign that says handicapped that's in front of it.
Okay.
So I was just wondering if you could check that out and just see if that was...
Yeah, I can run it by Jamie.
Because I think it's ADA compliant.
Not a problem.
Again, that's, that's not your onus. That's, as part of your business, I'm not, I believe that the entire establishment is supposed to have a required section. So, in some way, it does relate to you, but it's more to the business owner.
Okay.
But it'll keep you in compliance, too. Further questions or concerns from the board?
It's good stuff on the responses.
Yes, so the Fire Department, much of our concerns are covered under the Fire Department, Fire Regulations, and OSHA. And Mr. Bott said this has been already provided to you, but this is a public hearing, so is there anybody, any concerned or interested parties that might have questions? Please.
You might not have the answer to this, but maybe Jamie could get it for us. The Fire Department was concerned about a couple of sheds on the site, and, you know, the dumpster, I don't know if you know what they are?
Yeah, so I spoke to Jamie, and when that building was put up in 2017, it might have been shortly after that, the code then was that if you, or the regulation was that if you had any kind of shed you wanted to put up that was less than 120 square foot, you didn't need to pull a permit for it. So what's in those two sheds from Jamie was that one is the water tank for the well, and the other one is electronics for his camera system.
Okay, so, I'm bringing it up so that everybody hears that you won't be accessing...
Oh, yeah, no, no.
Under 100 square feet is, is fine. Did we check to see if it's within the 100-foot, because he would have been required, because he put in a foundation in regards to that, which made it a permanent structure to some degree?
Well, the building commissioner is here tonight for any specific questions about...
Yeah, we just want to check on it, because it was brought up by one of the planning board members, and we want to make sure that, that they're in compliance, because even though the sheds look reasonably sized to me, if they're in the wetlands, and again, it's not your...
Yeah, so two issues. They don't pertain to Mr. Malone's application, but through conversations and memos with the building commissioner, he's going to reach out to the property owner and make sure that we're in compliance.
Excellent. We just want to cross our t's and dot our i's, but again, not your concern is something we, when we went over it with you, that we saw while we were on our site walk.
Okay.
All right, it is a public hearing, so any questions or concerns from the public? Seeing none. Has the board had a chance to...
Would you like me to run through the draft decision?
Let's, let's ask for, the chair will accept a motion to approve, thank you very much, to close the public hearing on the application of Matthew Malone requesting a special permit for 309 Tremont Street to operate a retail store and service motocross, et cetera.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Dion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gasky. Do we have discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Dion.
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky, aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sodillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. All right, public hearing is closed, the chair will accept a motion to approve the application of Matthew Malone requesting a special permit at 309 Tremont Street to operate a retail store and service motocross, but before I do that, I have to ask you, how did it go with the select board?
Good, perfect.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Approved?
Yep, they said just contingent to what you guys decided, so we're good.
Then we'll move ahead, the chair will accept the motion...
I will make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Robinson, seconded by Ms. Sodillo. Do we have further discussion? As part of this discussion, Mr. Bott, I think you should cover...
Right, so let's walk through the findings and conditions. So, the applicant submitted his application, including the narrative, site plan, a hand-drawn drawing of unit number one, there's photos of the property that I had prepared. A member from the Assistant Deputy Fire Chief dated May 19th noting that based on Massachusetts Fire Code MA 527 CMR-1, the facility is suitably equipped for the type of business submitted by Mr. Malone defined as motorcycle and power sports vehicle repair. Assistant Deputy Chief also noted upon the issuance of a special permit, the applicant will be required to apply for a certificated occupancy from the building official. This process includes Fire Department site inspection to ensure compliance with applicable codes. Assistant Deputy Chief Boyle provided a follow-up email on June 12th, following the planning board's June 1 meeting, addressing the board's concerns regarding ventilation, management of volatile fluids, floor drainage type tanks, and used parts disposal. Rod Palmer has also provided a response to the planning board's concerns following the 6123 site visit, which I have a copy of. Those conditions include, let's see, the site is at 309 Tremont Street, the select board approved a license for a commercial garage requiring additional insurance, and in addition to the $1 million insurance policy required by the property owner. The applicant's leased the property and has been paying rent for two months, hours of operation are Monday through Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. The business will operate in unit one located at the south end bay in the four-bay building. There is a customer entrance in the front, a backing, in the front lot fronting on Tremont Street, and a garage door in the rear. Eight parking spaces are allocated to unit number one, and no customer equipment will be stored outside overnight. A retail store selling engine oil, grips, tires, spark plugs, and other new parts will include e-commerce, while most goods will be drop shipped directly from the supplier to the customer. Used parts stored in a barrel are removed monthly, per Deputy Chief Boyle. He coded several things from the Fire Code that I'm not going to read into the record tonight, but they are in the decision. As well as management of volatile fuel oils, which are covered under Massachusetts Fire Code MA 527 CMR-1, Chapter 42.3 and multiple sections of NFPA 38, Chapter 4, Storage of Liquids. As noted above, the issuance of a special permit, the applicant will require to apply for a certificate of occupancy from the building official, and that process includes that Fire Department site inspections to make sure it complies with code. The public hearing is open on May 23rd, continued and closed on June 13th. A site walk was held on the site. Those conditions include, a true copy of the recorded decision is registered, the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds shall be submitted to the board, property owner cosigns the application, hours of operation are Monday through Saturday from 10:00 to 6:00. The business will operate in unit number one located at the south end of the four-bay building. There's a customer entrance at the front, bay door in the back, eight parking spaces are allocated to unit one, and no customer equipment stored overnight, and the specialment runs with the, is the tenant of unit one. Oftentimes, specialment's run with the property, but in this case, a rental in an existing building, that specialment is tied specifically to Mr. Malone's use of the property. And that concludes the conditions and the findings of the board.
All right. And, parts storage? I saw Mr. Boyle had...
Used parts, used parts are stored in a barrel...
Yeah.
And they are collected monthly, did you say?
Monthly, yes.
Monthly. So they're basically in the barrel, there's other barrels for used oils and things like that. Company Weston Oil out of Rhode Island, I think picks up the used oils as well.
Will, will a barrel be sufficient for your needs?
Yeah, that won't be an issue.
Okay.
Yeah.
And...
And those are kept inside. Correct, nothing outside. Yeah, nothing outside, barrels, everything's inside on the platform.
And all hazardous waste materials will be kept in a secondary containment. All right. So, any further discussion or concerns, comments, or conditions from the board? All right, seeing none. The motion is to approve under the conditions as stated by Mr. Bott. Mr. Dion.
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sodillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you very much, and good luck to you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Our next order of business is a public hearing in accordance with the provisions of the Town of Carver zoning bylaw, the Carver Planning Board will hold a public remand hearing on public hearing held in accordance with order approving joint motion for remand and judgment of remand dated May 8, 2023, Land Court Civil Action Number 22 MISC 000563, June 13, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. in the Carver Town Hall, Meeting Room Number One, on the application of Bridgestone Development, Inc., requesting a special permit pursuant to Sections 532230C, 2230, 4341 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at Lot Number Three, Ricketts Pond Business Park, Offspring Street in Carver, Mass. Assessors map Lot 32, map 32 Lot 1-3, in the Spring Street Innovation Zoning District. The project will consist of the construction of two light industrial buildings. The lot will be comprised of two approximately 7,452 square foot light industrial buildings with associated driveways, parking areas, closed drainage system, septic system, and utility connections. Any person's interested and willing, wishing to be heard should appear in the time and the place designated. A copy of the plan is on file, the planning department may be reviewed during normal business hours. The applicant has requested a continuance without testimony until 7/11/23 at 7:00 p.m., Meeting Room One, Carver Town Hall. He put that in writing?
Correct.
All right, the board will accept the motion to continue said public hearing until July 11, 2023, at 7:00 p.m., Meeting Room One, Town Hall.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Gasky. Seconded by Ms. Sodillo. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Dion?
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky, aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sodillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. All right, our next order of business is a public hearing on the application of Bean Town Home Services, Inc., requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to Sections 3100, 5300, 4341, and 2230C of the Carver zoning bylaw, located at Lot Number Five, Ricketts Pond Business Park off Spring Street in Carver, Mass. Assessors map 32, Lot 1-5, in the Spring Street Innovation Zoning District. The lot will be comprised of approximately 6,621 square foot light industrial building with associated driveways, parking areas, closed drainage system, septic system, and utility connections.
Good evening. My name is Eric Shoemaker. I'm here from Mackenzie Engineering Group. We did the civil site layout plans and surveyed the property, representing our applicant, Bean Town Home Services Incorporated, and I'm here with the project attorney, Matt Mitchell.
Hi, my name's Matt Mitchell. I'm from Orenberger, Delisean Harris, and the owner of Bean Town, G. Bradley, is also here with us tonight.
So I'm going to walk everybody through our site plan design, starting on this second sheet, sheet EX1. So the lot is located where the cursor is. It's Lot Five of the Ricketts Pond Business Park definitive subdivision in Carver, it's Assessors map 32, Lot 1-5, and it's comprised of 62,067 square feet and roughly 1.42 acres. So the site's located in the Spring Street Innovation Zoning District and the Town of Carver's Water Resource Protection District. It's bordered by Ricketts Pond and undeveloped woodlands to the east, State Highway Route 44 to the west, and undeveloped woodlands to the north, and Spring Street to the south. We've been here for a couple of these parcels now, and the Ricketts Pond definitive subdivision was approved originally by the Carver Planning Board back in April of 2019. The soil stockpiles have been removed from the lot, and it's roughly been graded to one foot below the proposed grade, about elevation 147. The topo by Mackenzie Engineering Group was updated in March of 2023, and those updated topo contours are shown in red. The original grading for the subdivision design is shown in the gray transparent lines in the plan. The topography ranges in elevation, but it generally slopes to the east towards Ricketts Pond. The site is located in a FEMA Zone X and is not, not located in the DEP Zone Two or Town of Carver Aquifer Protection Zone. No wetland resources were encountered on this lot, and it's not located in the 100-foot buffer zone from any bordering vegetated wetlands associated with Ricketts Pond. So the subdivision roadway is shown in this plan as Ricketts Pond Drive, but it's yet to be formally conveyed to the town as a roadway. So moving on to our site layout plan sheet C1, as shown in our special permit application, we're filing for a special permit authorized by zoning Sections 2230C, that's warehouse That's warehouse in a building with less than 20,000 square feet. Section 4341, any uses with more than 10,000 impervious in the Water Resource Protection Zone. So this building shows the proposed, or the sheet shows the proposed building as well as the surface treatments, the parking areas, and some landscaping. The top of the sheet, you'll see the land usage table, which shows compliance with the Spring Street Innovation Zoning District, as well as the parking calculations. So the proposed development is going to consist of a 6,621 square foot commercial and light industrial building with Batumis concrete parking area and 24-feet-wide access drives, some site infrastructure, there'll be utility connections, proposed septic system, and a closed drainage system. So the concrete, Batumis concrete parking area is gonna consist of 38 onsite parking spaces with two handicap accessible spots and a van-accessible parking space located to the north of the building. The project proposes 24-foot-wide driving aisles with one-foot-wide Cape Cod berm within all the parking areas. A 15-foot-wide one-way driving aisle is located along the southern side of the building. That's going to be used by work vehicles accessing the rear loading bay and the dumpster areas before their working days and loading the designed vehicle for the rear of the site, which will be a box truck. Cement concrete loading ramp is recessed into the building along the front facade. That will be used by delivery vehicles, some tractor trailers, and you'll see later in the site plan, a turning analysis for that movement. So move on to the grading and drainage plan, Sheet C-2. Our goal in designing this drainage system was to comply with all the local and state stormwater management regulations, as well as attenuate the 2, 10, 25, and 100-year storm events. A closed drainage system consisting of a series of catch basins and drainage manholes will direct stormwater runoff from the parking area of Lot Five to the infiltration basin that will accept runoff for the eastern portion of the subdivision project as specified in the original 2019 drainage report filed for the subdivision. So a drainage easement will run through Lots Four and Lot Three to get to that infiltration basin for this lot, and that's shown on the original existing conditions plan submitted with the plan set. The proposed roof runoff will be captured and conveyed into the closed drainage system, and a trench drain is included at the bottom of that front loading ramp to capture any runoff associated with the ramp. So the original January 2019 drainage report for the subdivision was revised and updated with the impervious coverage for this lot, similar to what we've been doing on the previous planning board filings with this development. And we proved in our drainage report that the flood elevation for that infiltration basin will decrease as a result of our development. Both infiltration basins, Basin One and Two, are still compliant with the requirements for Massachusetts Stormwater Management Handbook, and greater than one foot of freeboard is maintained within that 100-year flood elevation. Moving on to the utility plan, Sheet C-3. The utility design includes underground electric telephone and cable connections coming from Ricketts Pond Drive. The building will be serviced by a 1,000-gallon propane tank with underground gas service piping. Potable well is located to the northeast of the lot with an underground water service connection to the proposed building. It's right off here to the parking area, and a septic system is going to be located to the rear of the lot. I preliminarily sized that septic system, and we have it located out of the 100-foot septic buffer required by the Carver Board of Health. And the last sheet I'm gonna touch on is the landscape plan, Sheet LA-1. You'll see on, on the first legend and abbreviations page, the first page of our notes, we're requesting a waiver for the landscape, perimeter landscaping requirement. So to get into this plan, this landscape plan was designed using pollinator species specified by UMass. The side yard buffer is gonna consist of white pine trees and cedar trees, as well as pussywillow and endless summer hydrangea shrubs. There's gonna be six trees located on the north side with 12 shrubs, and six trees located on the south side with 12 shrubs. The rear buffer will consist of 34 emerald green arborvitae spaced approximately 10 feet from the centers, and the front will consist of seven pin oak trees spaced 35 feet each. That originated from the subdivision rules and regulations. It's been maintained. The interior parking area is gonna consist of five eastern redbud trees and four cedars. And then, just to justify our request from Section 3242 for perimeter parking lot landscaping, I believe we require 25 feet on a last, on at least three sides of the parking area. So starting here on the northern side, we have 25 feet maintained along the side yard setback, and then excess of 25 feet off the north here, we have 41 to the side directly. The eastern side of the parking area, where we have the row of arborvitae, we have 25 feet located along the parking spots, and then the buffer decreases on the loading area. The southern side of the development, we have 25 feet located along the one-way access drive, and then we decrease the buffer 14 feet to fit in the dumpster pad, which will be utilized by the employees. So in total, we're providing 62 trees and 24 shrubs to screen the parking area from abutting parcels. This lot is located at the end of Ricketts Pond Drive. It's the last lot of the subdivision before you get to Plimpton, and it will not be visible from Spring Street or any other residential uses. So based on this technical justification, we just wanna get the planning board's initial thoughts on the landscaping design, because I, I think that the three sides of the parking area can kind of be open to interpretation as far as whether to include the one-way driving aisles, or is that just from the, the parking stalls designated for the use? So that's a quick summary of the site plans, and we'll answer any questions that the members may have.
Are you, a quick question. On the right side of the building there, on the one-way, are you proposing a lighting system in that area?
A lighting system?
Yeah.
I believe at this moment, there's going to be lights mounted at the rear of the building. I don't, I don't think they're included on the sides.
Okay, I, I wouldn't have thought so. And it says that your front screening in regards to the parking area is only seven feet?
In, in which area?
Directly in front of the loading bay?
Directly in front of the loading bay.
Right there, yeah.
In this area?
Yeah.
Let me see what I had here.
Because, again, that's-
7.1 feet.
As, as, as this hasn't been assured to the board that this is going to become or remain a private street, part of that is screening from the public ways, and, and this hasn't been assured to the board, and that's, that's gonna be part of our concern, or part of my concern anyways, that that area has to be screened. These sidewalks are there to allow people to walk around, and we're gonna wanna see, I personally am gonna wanna see that beefed up more. Seven feet is not, this is, if we're gonna allow parking in front of the building here, and it looks like we're allowing one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven spaces, although technically, where's the front of the building? Is that on the left side? Right, so, so we're gonna make some judgment calls here, but better screening is gonna have to be provided on the public street side. Or if this ever becomes a private way, and we have that assurance, that's something that we can bring down a little bit. We're gonna want some information from our engineers in regarding to the delivery area. Now, you're saying you're having a delivery area in back, too?
The, the area in back is more of a loading area.
For box trucks?
For box trucks. They'll come in at the beginning of the workday, they'll load their truck, they'll unload into the dumpster from the day before, and then they're, they're gone for the day.
Is it gonna be used for material storage?
I believe all material storage should be inside the building.
Okay. Inside the building is two stories?
I, I can't speak to the architectural design.
Well, they, they provided something here that looks like a, a two stories.
Okay.
So that's gonna increase the square footage in regards to this project. Correct?
Uh, the, yeah, the gross square footage would increase with two stories, yeah.
That's, that's gonna need to be readjusted. Snow removal area?
Any, any snow that can't be stored onsite will be, will be captured and brought to a snow storage facility by contractors.
All right. I'm sorry, did, a, removal? Is that-
Yep, so that snow will be stored in the landscape areas and won't obstruct any sightlines, and then any snow that can't be stored onsite will be brought to a snow storage removal.
Right, right. Is that identified on here anywhere?
I don't believe it's shown in the plan. It would, I don't know if we're gonna receive a review letter for this, but that was, it's been the comment.
I, I, yeah, I, we will be getting a review letter from the engineer. Also, we'd like to see more evergreens on the street side, too. We appreciate the street trees, but part of the objective is to block unsightly features. It's also gonna help with some of your other requirements on the front facade of the building in regards to breaking it up, windows, and various other aspects in that regard.
If I could just interject for a second here about evergreens on the street. Evergreens typically aren't used on a street because they don't lose their leaves in the winter, and there sometimes are effects from shading that doesn't melt ice. So we typically use deciduous trees along street fronts rather than evergreens.
Then we'll wanna see some type of berm with landscaping to obscure the parking area.
Along the frontage?
Along the street side. I, I don't think the board is overly concerned with the northeast side that faces the highway, but, again, I can't speak for the board, but some adjustments I expect could be made in, in that area to help you.
So if, if we beef up the plantings, can we maintain the seven-foot buffer? I know there's no, for the Spring Street Innovation Zoning District, there's no landscape setback from the front property line. It's the perimeter landscaping.
Yes, and, but for every parking space up to, you have to add footage, which comes out to 25-foot, and, and that's a parking area, so if you wanna, I mean, there's only three sides to your parking area. There's, the fourth side is the building, so it, it's, I, I, I don't think in this particular area that a 25-foot is required, but I, I would certainly want to see something better than, than seven foot. I think we can fit a bike rack in here. I'm not asking for a lot of bike racks. I, I don't recall what the numbers is in regards to bike racks, but again, that's something that should be able to fit in on a property of this size. Now, I also notice on your sediment and construction site development plan, what exactly is the proposed fueling and maintenance location supposed to be?
That's designated area for construction vehicles to, to fuel and maintain.
Are you gonna be working on construction materials onsite? Or, I mean, are you gonna have to put some sort of containment for hazardous spills or proposed hazardous spills in that area, and-
Okay, that can be removed.
It, it, it doesn't have to be removed, it just has to be contained. You have to, if you're gonna be working or fueling vehicles, you're gonna have to put something under it and collect whatever comes out of it. And it shouldn't be extensive maintenance on vehicles. You pop a tire, we get that, a track falls off, you know? I don't want, no engine overhauls, or- Questions, concerns?
Yeah. On the front, uh, I want you to go back.
This one?
I want you to go back to the building on the property, maybe, maybe go back to landscaping, So, right there, that's a loading dock, so you're gonna be entering-
The ramp.
-the first, in the first one. So I am, I'm thinking with your seven-foot-one landscaping area and the 24 feet that you're probably gonna need, that 24 feet, because you're gonna be bringing trucks in and then backing into that loading dock, right?
Correct.
So we would probably have to need the fire department to determine whether or not they could cut down, cut that size down.
Well, there's over 45 feet in the loading area out back, which, which can be adjusted and worked with.
But I'm talking about specifically in the front there, whole loading dock.
Right, right, which, and I'm saying that there's an exceptional amount of space to move the building back five feet to allow maybe 12 feet of, of landscaping in the front.
You're talking about moving the whole building?
It's only paper right now.
Right.
So I, I can speak to the, the thought behind the design. So this is the truck turning plan. So our design vehicle, you'll see in the top right here is that WB40, so 40-foot wheelbase tractor-trailer. It's gonna come in, stop, back up into the loading area, and then continue around the subdivision. This 45-foot rear loading space, that was designed to allow for a three-point turn for a box truck to come in through this one-way aisle and then back up against the building. Typically, they need, I, my other designs for this project, I mean, the front lot, I had it at 43 feet, so it's, it's close to that, and that was really the minimum that we like to design to for those box trucks. So we have a couple feet to spare, but that was the thought process behind designing the, the loading areas.
And we're gonna have some safety concerns, which will probably be addressed by our engineer in regards to the parking spaces in the loading area. If, if people are parking there, and we wanna make sure that if the truck's going forward or backing up, it's doing so safely.
Yeah, along the front of the building?
Yes.
And regarding the front of the building, again, in the area that's being landscaped and in concern of a barrier, that seven-foot-one, is that to the center of the tree? So do you have a little bit of space on the other side of that? Can I ask, Mr., I don't know why my, I went blank.
On me?
No, the gentleman in the back.
Bradley.
Why, why can't I think of his name? Peter?
I'm sorry.
That's all right. There's an area, seven-foot-one, to the center of the four trees in the front. Now, on the other side of that dark black line, is that the center of the trees, and so is there gonna actually be a little area there where they can use to maybe put some plantings, so that they might not have to move that in their-
I honestly don't know what, I, I don't have the plans with the, with the subdivision called for. I know there's a grass strip and sidewalk there.
Yeah. So that's probably a sidewalk?
It's 7.1 to the property line, and I would say there's another one or two feet to the back edge of the sidewalk, and then the five-foot-wide sidewalk, and then another grass strip to the road.
Right, all right. So upon Mr. Chair's concern, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out the best way for you to- I'm just trying to figure out the best way for you to not have to move the building, but be able to put some kind of coverage in the front and allow you to have the space that you need for a three-point turn on the box car in the back.
It's a one-way, I'm sorry, so why would you need a three-point turn?
Well, it's a one-way driving aisle, and we made this one-way to maintain that 25-foot landscaped buffer. And then, yeah, they're gonna come in and then do a three-point turn and back up into the, you know, to load from the building.
They're not gonna turn the corner and back into a loading space?
In the rear here?
Yeah.
They're gonna swing around the corner and then back the rear of the truck up to the building, and then swing around again and leave the site.
It's not really a three-point turn. A three-point turn would be reversing direction. You're backing into the back of the building, and then you're pulling out in the same direction you back then.
Correct, yep. They're pulling out around the other side of the building.
Yes, 'cause you're proposing one-way, which is excellent. You got gates on both end, I can see that. So, it's something that is one of my concerns, that's all.
If I may, Mr. Chair. We have conducted our, oh, Andy Glines, Fuston O'Neill, Site Civil Consultant on behalf of the town. We have conducted our initial review of this, but I haven't issued a comment letter yet to the town or the applicant. Wanted to come to this hearing first and have the initial presentation, and then... But we'll be able to finalize our formal memo and issue it this week. But I can go through a couple of the items that came up so far with the board members and applicant items. The first thing I did wanna point out regarding the screening and the buffer. The applicant is proposing a six-foot-tall vinyl fence along the southern property line as well as the eastern property line, which are two locations. North is to the left.
So, they're proposing it on the right and on the top?
Correct.
And, and the right, I think that, again, this is just my personal opinion, it's not facing a residential area, or is it? Is it facing the lot next to it?
If he's got the, if he's got the south and the, what's that, the east side covered, that's going to block anything, 'cause the residential is, if you look at the locust map here, most of the residential is down here to the south and east.
Is this gonna be high on the hill, or is it gonna be on the same level as the lot three and four?
Well, I believe the subdivision, it gains elevation as you go up the roadway, you know, because the infiltration basin's located at the end, has to hydrologically flow downhill to get there. So it's a couple feet, I would, you know, lot four is a foot higher than lot three, and I would say lot five is a foot higher than lot four.
But they are proposing a fence on the pond side, which was in the item.
The pond side would be our biggest in regards to residential. I wouldn't know that it would be necessary. I think you, I'm sure the board would allow a reduction on the right side because it's only next to the other lot next to it, and I believe we allowed some level of reduction on the previous lot three and two.
Okay.
Understood, Chair. Wonder if it's high enough for a while, like, to get it in these? So it's just gonna be on the pond side? That we deal with lot three, I believe?
I don't know if the applicant provided a detail on the fence. I mean, it's certainly something that wouldn't be opposed to. You know, I guess on other projects, we've allowed a couple inches below the bottom of the fence. If that's something the applicant would be open to. Yeah, I don't think there's any security concerns. It's more of a screening and noise reduction barrier.
Yeah, well, yes, that's perfect, yep. 'Cause, and it's gonna be box trucks, which are mostly set higher.
My other thing was that we're gonna put more into wells in these areas due to the lack of water.
So, for other lots within this subdivision, we've recommended installing monitoring wells. For this particular lot, at least currently in our memo, I wasn't gonna recommend monitoring wells installed for this particular site because all the stormwater from this site is directed down to the infiltration basin to the, that's the south. This lot's higher elevation than the other lots in the subdivision and further away from the pond, so the depth of a monitoring well at this location, you know, would have to be deeper than the others and wouldn't necessarily provide, it's more, there's more benefit to the town to be able to sample monitoring wells located closer to the infiltration basin where the stormwater from the sites in the subdivision are being directed. And so far, to date, the test pits that have been done in the subdivision for the road construction as well as individual lots have shown that they still have the vertical separation between the basin and seasonal high groundwater that's required by the stormwater handbook. No, as far as I know, no actual water samples have been taken from any wells. I don't know if the applicant can speak to that, but at the moment, it's just been verifying that there is enough vertical separation between the stormwater that's collected in the infiltration basin before it intercepts groundwater, which so far, they're meeting that. Regarding the loading dock at the front of the site, there is a landscape island, a triangular landscape island directly adjacent to the loading dock that just currently has one tree proposed on it. I'd advise the applicant to look at adding some additional plant material at that location, 'cause I think that would do, provide the most benefit to screening that loading dock. And it's also important to note that obviously the loading dock is sloped lower than the finished floor of the building by, I wanna say, three and a half feet or so. So that will also, you know, make it more feasible to screen any vehicles that are parked at that location, and have the trench drain for drainage at that location.
Did you say that will be a trench drain?
Trench drain at the bottom, yeah. So trench drain that's tied into the same storm drain network for the rest of the site.
HVAC came all the way in here.
Trying to talk loud, but it's hard to overpower the HVAC. One question I had was regarding the gates. What type of gate would be proposed? I didn't see any swings shown, so I'm assuming sliding gates, but just wanted that verified. And if you don't have the answer today, I can put in a response to comments. Obviously, that will impact, if there are swing gates, that would impact potential turning movement conflicts. And then, in the rear of the building with the 40 cubic yard dumpsters, I don't know if you can elaborate on how those would be accessed or unloaded? I guess ideally, turning movements on how those would be picked up as well as the box trucks would be beneficial to verify the turning movements. Yeah, I see you both taking a lot of notes. This will all be in my formal memo, but...
Trying to get ahead of it.
Yeah.
Andy, while you brought up the gates, can I ask them, on the swing gates, are they gonna have locks on them? If they have locks on them, I assume that the fire department is gonna wanna have those locks for access.
I don't know that at that time, at this time. I don't know if there'll be sliding or swing, but I'll get that information for you.
Okay.
And the last thing I have in here that I wanted to mention this evening was the applicant requested a waiver for parking spaces in front of the building. Maybe the parking plan, or the site layout plan, rather. My assessment is that currently there's the seven parking spaces that are directly in front of the building, and as the bylaws written, it's located forward of any building front line on the lot. So although there is some other parking spots to the left of the plan that are located forward to the front, I consider those in the side yard. So currently, I don't believe a waiver is actually required for more than eight. Well, I guess there's a waiver required for parking in front of the building. But I know in other lots, specifically in the subdivision, there's been a question about more than eight.
Yes.
So I just wanted to reiterate that.
I would think that would be a fair assessment. And that's just my opinion. Also, people getting in and out of their vehicles in those spots with trucks and backing up and all of that. We wanna make sure that all safety issues in regards to that are gonna be covered, so nobody gets hit, run over, backed into. We also don't want stacking, so that'll be prohibited from the site, too. Make arrangements that they come and go at regular times where they don't interfere with each other.
Is there any possibility that those seven parking spots could be designated for certain employees that wouldn't be coming and going? Or is all the parking, employee parking, so there isn't really certain? I'm just wondering if it would be possible to designate those spots for someone that would be less likely to be entering or exiting the lot when the trucks would be delivering?
I can talk with the applicant and see what their parking demand will be.
Sure. That's all I have at the moment. I'll, I did take some notes this evening as well, so finalized my formal memo and issued that through the town planner to the applicant and the board.
Thank you, and berm the trash containers to contain any sort of... I know you guys are, what, HVAC, electrical and plumbing is what's being proposed, so... A lot of the materials might have coatings of hazardous nature on them that we wanna prevent from getting into the general water supply.
Yep, so I'll look into that as well and see if, how the disposal of any hazardous material will be conducted on the site.
And I saw you have a variety of offices and such, so we will be asking for a berm control plan to be filed with the board to help also. Any further questions? This is a public hearing, so is there anybody from the public that might have any questions, concerns, or comments to raise to the board? Mr. Obuchinsky, if you come up and recognize yourself?
Sure, Peter Obuchinsky, I'm the owner of Ricketts Pond Development. I just wanted to point out that there is a four-acre parcel between lot five and Ricketts Pond, and we've just completed earth removal on that four-acre parcel. But as part of our conditions with the Earth Removal Committee, we constructed a berm that's 15 feet tall. So that, I'm not sure if the owner has to have the fencing, but I just wanted to point out that there's a 15-foot-tall berm now between the building and Ricketts Pond.
Oh, okay.
So it's not like what we had on lots three and coming up lot four, where they, there's no room for a berm.
Thank you, 'cause that wasn't, I didn't see that noted, but...
Are you talking directly to the east, or...
On the top side of the proposed?
Directly to the east is Ricketts Pond.
Yeah.
And there's a four-acre parcel between Ricketts Pond and lot five. That's not owned by Ricketts Pond, it's a private landowner.
So maybe the fence might be overkill, so...
It might be, but I'm...
We can take a look at it.
It looks like they're looking for security as well for their property, gate things and whatnot.
Right, right. Yeah, we don't want it to look like a concentration camp, so...
Right, and in all likelihood, I will probably keep this roadway private if that helps in deciding what you want to do.
We need you to lock that in, so I mean...
Yeah, and I don't know what's involved with that, so...
Right, right.
But if it helps, you know, the buyer of the lot here, you know, as far as squeezing the building in on this lot and getting what it needs to make it business-functional, then, you know...
No, we agree, I think we need to see, it's, we're working towards development of it. There's areas to work with, it's not squeezed in too tight, but we'll arrange for a sidewalk, and it'll give us a better idea of the berm and everything else that we're working on.
Okay, great, I know, I think it's a great opportunity to bring another growing business into town as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Arrange a sidewalk? When do we wanna arrange a sidewalk? Monday at noon? No, you can't make a Monday at noon.
I unfortunately have an extremely small window of about quarter to five, a quarter past five, any given day. Not that I want anybody to have to work around me, but that's...
No.
I could do that if I had to, even if I had to go on my own.
I can, I know you work...
Mondays and Fridays.
Mondays and Fridays.
Football season is coming to a close, so that opens up my schedule quite a bit.
Like quarter of five, then, say, on...
Quarter to five to quarter after five is a window that I can definitely work with.
On maybe next Tuesday? If that's, if you guys can have it staked out and everything by then? Or when do you feel that you might have the opportunity to get it staked out?
Our survey crew is out, I would say, end of next week, probably the fastest time.
And when is, and we're meeting in two weeks?
We're meeting on the 27th. So the end of next week is the 23rd.
So it would have to be on Thursday or Monday? But you're tied up for Monday?
I can go on my own, but I'd rather be with...
Right, so it looks like we're shooting for Thursday of next week? Quarter to five?
Twenty, so the 22nd would be the earliest? They'd be able to get...
'Cause we're meeting on the 27th, right?
Right. Would they be able to do it by the 22nd?
The 22nd? Yeah, they should by the 22nd.
Okay.
If you run into trouble, get me the CAD file, and I can have Justin do it.
Okay, yep.
Mr. Deion, how's that work?
Thursday, the 22nd?
At quarter of five?
That's tied with me. Caleb?
That's what I'm looking at.
You'd like the corners of the building staked out?
Corners, roadway, yeah.
Thursday, the 22nd, and F. up quarter to five.
Yeah. And... Anything else do we need to see? The building, the roadways? And a rough idea of the parking area?
Yeah, and you said the berm is already there, right?
The berm?
Yeah, the berm's already there.
Yep.
Yeah, that should be...
So, yeah, so I wanna see the entrances, I wanna see the building, I wanna see roughly where the proposed landscaping line is going to be on the street side and on the backside.
Yeah, the end of the park, I want it there, going towards the port.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you need property lines?
If you put, I think, I think right, left, and the upper, upper-left corner there would be sufficient. Is there a dirt road or anything up there, yet?
I believe the...
It's still a pretty active site as far as earth removal. I just hate to see, can't have to spend a lot of money 'cause the state's flattened by heavy equipment.
That's an expensive survey.
So, let's just do the entrances in the building?
Okay.
Is that, and I'd like to know where your rear property line is?
That's already, the stakes are in for that now.
Okay.
And we can tie off the building, you know, you could put a tape to the stakes and measure out the 43 feet to the edge of the pavement there.
Okay, just if you do the entrance ways at the property line and the building and you say the rear property line's already staked out, so I think that should be, give us a sufficient idea.
We're talking about the driveway cuts, right?
The driveway, yeah, curb cuts in the building, yeah. Anything else you want to see? Any further questions from the citizens of town? Seeing none? If you gentlemen are all set, then we will continue the public hearing until June 27, 7:00 p.m., Meeting Room 1, Town Hall Cover.
Is there a deadline for response to comments that the board has?
If you can't get to it by our next meeting, then you can just ask for continuance.
Okay.
So unless, if you guys don't feel you're not going to be ready, but Andy seems to be kind of on top of it already, so...
Yeah, it sounds like we're in good shape with that.
All right. So the chair will accept the motion to continue the public hearing to June 27, 2023, 7:00 p.m., Meeting Room 1, Cover Town Hall.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Ms. Sardaro, seconded by Mr. Deion. Do we have further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Deion?
Mr. Deion says aye.
John Gersky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Cipillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you, gentlemen, we'll see you then.
Thank you very much.
A week Thursday. Oh, what's this one for?
That's what you're asking about, right?
Right. We just lost one at the last meeting.
I...
Ellen, one sheet.
One sheet.
I'm sorry, I saw it.
I wrote all over mine.
You lost. I don't know.
I thought we were moving on to this.
What's that? Uh, no, I don't even, I don't even know what this is.
It's the permit for the motorcycle shop.
Oh, it's for the Malone.
Oh, um, do we have a stapler handy?
We do not staple originals because they get scanned and sent to the clerk, they're numbered, page four.
Okay.
Yeah, I number them to get a lot of processing after this time.
There's a page for that.
Oh, that, see, this one's...
So the drafts...
Right.
Get stapled, but the originals don't because those get scanned, they get processed.
Do we have the original, the original two pages of it?
Mm-hmm.
I, I, I need to, I initial them all. If it's not stapled, I initial every them. So I'll pass that along to you. What is this? Apparently, that's Malone, but I initial every page because if we're not stapling them, I don't just sign.
Oh, this is for, this is for Malone?
I don't just sign a blank piece.
The motorcycle shop, right?
Yeah, yeah, motorcycle shop. All right. Our next order of business is preliminary subdivision plan. Winkinko 0 and 46 Federal Road, assessors map 131, lots 2-4 and 4-3, in an industrial aid district.
Mr. Chairman Bob Rogers with GAF Engineering on behalf of the applicant.
Hi, Bob. Nice to see you again.
Good to see you as well.
All right, it looks like we have some comment letter here, I believe. All right, what do we got? Well, our first comment is directed to Mr. Bart, so wait for his return. Waiver for taken land. What else we got?
He's not going to be able to answer that. And he's not going to be able to...
Observation pits, have we worked that one out yet? And it looks like, Bob, you have a order of resource area delineation?
That's correct. We had done an ANRAD for the wetland line that's closest proximity to the road. It's noted on the plan.
And do you have a project narrative for us? Something to tell us what's going on, what's planned? I know we had questions about the access to the mixing pad out back.
Correct, so back on April 6th, when we submitted this preliminary subdivision plan, our narrative on the utilities, there's a separate letter, utilities narrative is what is required, and that's dated April 6th.
But we, I think we would like an idea of what the plan is overall.
Okay.
That's just an idea. I mean, you're in an industrial agricultural area, which, you know, it's not, you're not going to be building houses, so...
Well, correct. And so what this subdivision depicts is the access road to the reconfigured lots. The southern section is in the industrial zone, and then the northern section is rezag, and we've already submitted plans for that northern section for earth removal and cranberry bog expansion. And so as far as a preliminary subdivision goes, because of our prior experience with this property, it's a pretty extensive set of drawings. And so the proposed utilities are indicated on the roadway plan and profile. So there would be the installation of a water main, which is for future fire protection needs. There is no water available in federal road, so there would be underground electric cable TV. Sure. So I'm looking at Sheet 8. I think at the first meeting that we had, I went through the basics of the design, and then we had our onsite a week ago tonight. And as, as is customary with a preliminary subdivision, you receive all the comments and you receive a direction from the board and any consultant review, and you incorporate that into the definitive submission, which we must file within seven months from April 6th. So this isn't a process where we would repetitively revise the preliminary submission.
Right.
We would simply accept your comments as guidance toward the definitive plan. But your specific question with regards to that mixing pad, the answer that I received was, so there's access from both federal road south of the mixing pad and to the north, there's a coordinated effort with the Reed Custom Soils, but that this subdivision roadway would not create any change in the access to and from that pad.
Is the access to or from that pad through this area at the proposed...
Nope, no, so...
That, I think that was more my concern, that you're going to try and run a road in that very little tiny area between the two properties.
Sure. So, and again, this was submitted last year as a freeze plan prior to town meeting. It was submitted this year, prior to this year's town meeting as a freeze plan to several of the zoning changes which were proposed. I don't know what passed and what didn't pass. But anyway, that's, the main purpose of this plan was to establish a zoning freeze once we follow this up, you know, with the definitive plan, as we did last year.
All right. Mr. Bart, are there any prior approvals or conditions regarding the property from CONCOM or earth removal?
Uh, nothing I've seen.
So you're reading a document, is that from Fosse O'Neil?
It is, did you...
I did not receive, I haven't received any, anything.
I can't get your mind, but I'll go over the generals. So the question to Mr. Bart was our first. Request a waiver from providing prospective street layouts for using the NAV 88 base, providing limits for all continuous land. Is recommended, Mr. Bart, provide the planning board with the order of resource area delineation. Is recommended to have something more recent for an aerial image. Recommend that the more recent 2021 aerial image for mass mapper to give a more accurate representation of the property. You're missing the priority habitats and vernal pools.
I disagree, since we showed those on those maps.
Those were the, yes, okay.
Yes. So because this property is so large...
Yeah.
You know, and not that...
That's fine.
There's nothing on-site, it's off-site on other lands.
He might not have gotten a copy, he might not have seen them, but that's what raised the questions of the...
So it's May 31st? Okay.
The Phase 1 site assessment, correct?
So would you agree, Mr. Chairman, that any of these items were, are most appropriately incorporated into the future definitive subdivision submission?
Were you here from the beginning of the meeting? So you saw the presentation...
Yes, I, yes, the first, the first meeting.
So you'll understand that Section 5, I'm sorry. Yes, Section 7, 6.5.1, if the applicant moves forward to a definitive plan, applicant shall be prepared to discuss impacts on environment and provide technical justification, proposed cul-de-sac and move subdividing lots under Section 4, plan not to be believed to require approval, because I look at this map and it's quite easily adjusted to give the 150 feet off the end of the property and then...
So I understand, so there's two sides to that coin, you know, one of which would be, as we know from walking federal road at the site visit, that there are many, many hairpin turns. You know, there was, you know, we did a traffic analysis at this location. It's generally preferred to have a single road access to multiple lots as opposed to multiple driveways in a Form A configuration. And there's also a legal aspect, which the applicant has chosen, you know, to file a Form B and a Form C to receive eight years of zoning protection. And if we were to do a Form A plan, it only affords three years of zoning protection. And so I think that is something that is the rightful choice of the applicant.
Did we provide the 65 and 100-foot buffer areas on the map? What page are those on?
The 65 and 100. So they're shown again on Sheet 8, which, which is the meat and potatoes, the road location itself.
Sheet 8 is the subdivision road.
Correct.
Okay, all right. I see the 65 and 100, um, regards to the road.
And we have the proposed tree line shown, and there's no proposed encroachment into those areas?
Yeah. For sure, we're going to want to see a much more extensive buffer zone in regards to a definitive subdivision plan. We will, because if you got the ORAD all set, it's part of something that we need to make an informed decision, so it should be included in the site plan for all the wetlands on the property.
I guess I miss, I miss your meaning in terms of additional buffer zone.
Well, I'm looking at, let's say, Parcel A 24C, edge of, isolated edge of wetlands is listed on there, you got cranberry bogs and reservoirs. You know, it's fairly extensive, and I see you put the building lines in, but everything works in conjunction with each other.
Okay, so in, yeah, so just to be clear, that Parcel A is, that's the drainage lot that's required for the roadway.
Okay, yeah.
So there's a detention basin.
Lot 24C.
Yeah, so, and so Lot, is it 2-4?
2-4.
Current, current, well, so the whole...
2-4C. It just, it should be, it should be on the general subdivision map, an outline of where the 65-foot and 100-foot is. And this lease area here on the northern portion is the radio tower, communication tower?
That's correct, that's where we parked.
Okay. All right, so that's the corner we walked down, all right.
And so again, waivers are discussed during the preliminary subdivision plan, they're never voted or decided upon, but, you know, we would certainly accept this memorandum and anything else that you might have from other town departments as our guidance moving forward on the definitive.
And you said the priority habitats are listed?
I provided those, those 21E documents, and...
Estimated habitat map. I see the priority habitat map, yeah.
Right, and so down at the bottom is a little legend, and it also, they also include the vernal pools, which is, yeah, so you've got this figure 1, 2, 3, and so you can see the entirety of this parcel is, these two properties currently are outside of NHESP jurisdiction. You know, as I've stated before... You know, as I've stated before, the, the northwestern portion of Lot 2-4, we've already submitted plans to the town for earth removal permit and for a notice of intent for cranberry bog and tailwater recovery pond.
On which, which section?
So the, the very northwestern wooded portion of the property, so you can, so the heavy red line is, is.
Oh, which page are you looking at?
Well, I'm, what I'm looking at is, I'm looking at Figure 3. So.
So. Say, in your packet, we've got USGS Locust, Figure 1, Figure 2 shows the priority habitat, Figure 3 shows the estimated habitat map, Phase 1 Site Assessment Plan, two sheets of that as well.
Yeah, if you look at Sheet 5 of 9, which, you know, not familiar with Mr. Bott's laptop, I do everything desktop, but if you look at Sheet 5 of 9, the very northwestern portion of the property, south of Cranberry Road, east of Federal Road, plans are in Town Hall for both earth removal and for cranberry bog expansion with tailwater recovery pond, and that project is almost exactly the same as a project that was approved in 2016, received an order of conditions in 2017, and has since expired, and so we needed to re, refile that.
And, and on this map here, where, where is that located?
So the, the very upper left portion of that screen, so that area there is proposed for 22 and 1/2 acres of cranberry bog and a 2.9 acre tailwater recovery pond. That's in the Resag District, it's, it's not in the industrial district.
Well, that lot has frontage, plenty of frontage, correct?
Certainly, yes. I think, again, we have a right to request the approval of a subdivision road layout, and even if, if it's for the purposes of zoning protection.
So there is, there is prior approvals and conditions regarding the property from the Concom and earth removal, I take it, okay.
Yes, but it expired, and, and so we just very recently refiled.
If we could get copies of those, Mr. Bott. And for preliminary, as part of the application, some of these waivers, if not all of them, are part of the application, it should have been included, so you should be requesting waivers for them. The board will need a copy of the November 21st, 2022, order of resource delineation area. I would like to see the more recent 2021 aerial image from Mass Mapper.
I'm not catching your mic, I'm not catching it on the mic.
We can't hear you at all. Sorry about that. All right, a waiver is required for 1, 2, and 3 as part of your application. We should be aware of any prior approvals and conditions regarding the property, I expect you're asking for renewal on those under the same, um, terms. The renew, uh, renewal through earth removal in Concom for the tailwater recovery in cranberry bogs. Are you just asking for renewal, or has there been substantial changes to the applications?
So we've, we've filed brand-new applications, and I'm just, from my looking at the 2016 filing and the filing of, of last week, it's very, extremely similar.
Okay, so, just.
So, but it's, and none of, none of that is part of this subdivision, this, you know, other than the proposed reconfiguration of Lot 2-4.
Right, but that's.
So.
Part of the subdivision, is it not? Or is that a separate, a separate lot entirely? Is that gonna become a separate, yes, because there's.
So, well, so today.
It's so far back that that, right.
Well, it, it only becomes a new lot after we receive the definitive plan approval.
Yes.
And, and we're not there yet, so, so those applications have been submitted with the current deed reference, the current configuration of Lot 2-4.
It's not directly, there's no earth removal or anything directly related to the, the three lots that we're looking at in relation to the subdivision, that, that was, that was what I was looking for.
Correct, I mean, we've got some material, it's, the road is a, you know, a moderate cut, and we've got to excavate for the pond, so, again, when we get to that.
Right, that, again, it's not in direct relation to the subdivisions, it's a separate lot in, in its entirety is what the plan is. It has tons of frontage, it has, right, that's what we're looking at, there's no.
We're looking at the Wankinko.
Yes, well, there's no proposal to be adding another subdivision road off of this that leads back to that lot, is there? Because, okay, because that is a land that is continuously owned by the same people, and the potential is there.
This is an exercise in zoning protection.
Yes, I, I understand.
In the industrial zone.
Yes.
South of other activities.
But if we're gonna approve it, there's, we have to approve it properly.
Yeah, I don't wanna get all, all legal, you know, I mean, we, we made our filing, we, we received all your comments, regardless of if we were officially approved, denied or ignored, we would still be following up, you know, with a definitive plan by November 6th in order to maintain our zoning protection.
Yes, and that's why we're, we're asking the questions, and that's why we're gonna want, want to see the, the ANRAD or ORAD reflected in the definitive plan, you've already filed one.
Yeah, right.
We get a general idea of where it is in location, direct location to the subdivision road, but when you're coming in with a definitive plan, we're gonna want to see a more robust definition of it, it's not you, it's everybody, part of our job, the 65 and 100-foot buffer areas fall heavily into things that we look at. Is there any questions from the board, any information requested from the board?
We need to, we need to make sure that we had monitoring wells installed, or at least noted where they would be installed for definitive subdivision, and prior to construction, make sure we have water testing completed, so we can see changes in the effects, if any construction actually happens.
Excellent, I think that's fair, but that's for a definitive.
Yes.
But it should be.
To move forward with the definitive plan, I'd like to see the monitoring wells, proposed monitoring well locations.
Yes, but that's, again, Bob, that's for the definitive plan.
Correct.
All right. Questions, concerns regarding the Wankinko preliminary plans? I don't see any, and you've received a copy from Mr. Glines, so. Is there any further information the board needs?
No, I won't.
All right. The Chair will accept the motion to approve the preliminary subdivision plan, Wankinko 0 and 46 Federal Road, Assessors Map 131, Lots 2-4 and 4-3 in industrial A District. Motion made by Ms. Sardella.
Will second it.
Seconded by Mr. Robinson, further discussion from the board. Seeing none, Mr. Dion.
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sardella says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye, thank you, Bob.
Thank you so much.
All right, the next order of business is preliminary subdivision plan, Johnson Brothers Cranberries off Fosdick Road, Assessors Map 57, Lot 1 and 2A, Map 58, Lot 2 and 8 in a residential agricultural district.
Good evening, my name is Mark Flaherty from Flaherty &amp; Stefani in Plymouth, if some of the board members might remember, we were also here a year ago to talk about this property that's off of Fosdick Road that also links up with Purchase Street, it's 130 acres that is owned by Johnson Cranberries Limited Partnership, and I can go through the drawings, Mr. Chairman, quickly, and we can then get, get to Mr. Glines's comments, if that works for you.
It, it works, yes, please.
Okay. So what we're showing is the cover sheet and some aerial photographs, the site, the site consists of 130 acres, it's predominantly a large portion of actual cranberry bogs, but we're subdividing this, this property into 130 acres into two lots, that's, that's the, the existing property line plan, that's, that's at the Registry of Deeds. This plan is the existing conditions, you can see a good portion of the site is with cranberry bogs, so, but, that being said, the, the lots that we're, that we're subdividing, Lot 1 and Lot 2, Lot 1 has, is, is 80 acres and 10 acres of uplands, this over here is Lot 2, and that is 51 acres with 12 acres of uplands, so there's a good portion of the, of the 130 acres that, as you can see back on the plans over here, that looks like there's nothing but bogs, there is actually 35 acres of uplands on this, and so down in this area over here is where we're proposing this 240-foot, uh, deep cul-de-sac, it would service two houses, this is the closest bog, this is the, the 65-foot buffer off that bogs, and there's a 100-foot buffer, so all work would be kept outside of the 65-foot buffer. As we come back with a definitive plan, Mr. Chairman, I noted that we're gonna want a more robust, as, as your words said, robust location of those wetlands, so that we know for sure with actual setbacks of where that 65-foot buffer and all work associated with that, so that we can, we can say definitively on the definitive plan, that's, that's where it is. So, what, what we're showing is a standard cul-de-sac, 24-foot in width, there would be cache basins, water quality inlet going into a, a retention, a retention pond here of about 7,000 square feet, it's, the drainage is sized up for the 2, 2, 10, 25, and 100-year storms, we're showing also a water main and a gas, a water main that would be set in a dry condition for future development if the road gets built, and we're, we're showing it's, we did test bits out there indicating all sand, we, we have to, one of the, one of the issues that Andrew has popped, has indicated that along the front edge here, there's a large bit of soil that was, was created, it's like a 24-high berm that would be, would be excavated to create this, this cul-de-sac right through here, the road is about 2% grade going up and, and down, and so, again, it's 24, 24 feet in width, on this property, there is no priority habitat, there is no flood zones of, of any issues, all work will be outside the 65-foot buffer, the houses will be served by septic systems and, and private wells, and so that is the overall theme of, of this project, again, you've noticed, notified on many different projects that this was created as part of freeze protection, but as you indicated, Mr. Chairman, the road could be built after, if the definitive plan gets built, and so we have to make sure that the road is, and the permits and the, and the approval is done to the planning board's satisfaction. So, if I can, if I can go to the comments of Mr., of Fosse O'Neil, please, so, on the first page, and I don't know if all the planning board members have it, but I can at least paraphrase what Andrew's comments are, that proposed lots 1 and 2 could be created by just a simple approval-not-required plan, but in, but in this situation, we, it was the owner's, it was the owner's desire and the owner's right to be able to go to the planning board with a proposed roadway, keeping in, in, consistent with the Mass General requirements for subdivision roads, and so that is the intention, the intention of the owners at this point, now, it, it could be the planning board's feeling of that, you know, that this, it would be better served by two ANR lots, but that's not what the, the developer wants to do, nor would his legal team will agree that should, that should be done, but that's maybe for a further discussion. On the second page of.
So, just, just.
Yes.
You're just saying you don't want to do it, is that, because?
We're, we're not gonna, we're not gonna do an approval-not-required plan, because this is a, for a roadway subdivision plan, this is the smittle for.
Right, but you're, you're talking about considerable cutting and grading in 30 feet in regards to this, plus the amount, extensive amount for two houses on.
Right, so.
If I may interject for a moment?
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm asking a question, so I would like the answer before.
All right, okay.
I understand it is your right to ask for it.
Sure, no, it's not our right, it's our right as, to go in front of a legal town to say, okay, this is by proposed subdivision plan in accordance with the Mass General laws on subdivision control, the town is issued subdivision rules and regulations, if the plan is in accordance with the subdivision rules and regulations without any waivers, then this body is duly, is duly, is to, is to approve that plan, if there's no waivers under the Town, Town and Carver's subdivision rules and regulations, and that's what this developer would like to present to the board, it's, I'm not trying to be aggressive or hostile, but I'm just letting you know.
I, I understand.
From, from, from a legal standpoint.
So you're just saying.
I'm not, I'm an engineer, lawyer.
You, you are not going to justify that this is just what you want to do, and there's no justification for it, it's just what you want to do.
We have a right to do that.
Right, right, that's, that's what I said.
Yeah, we have a right to do this.
Yes.
Yeah, this is what we're gonna do.
Okay.
With you, of course, we have to have your approvals, but we feel that we, if, if the plans meet with the subdivision rules and regulations, we ought to have your approval respectively, and so, anyways.
So, if I may.
Please.
With my, may, that's exactly what I was going to say, a subdivision plan is not a discretionary approval by the planning board, as the general law says, the planning board shall approve.
Mr. Bott, if you.
Mr. Bott, if you're going to interject, I, I, just, please. He already provided the information. The board is well aware that everything that meets within the subdivision rules and regulations. My question was, why? And, and he answered it.
Okay.
Thank you. And did you, because again, this was a concern that was brought up a year ago.
Yes.
And have you filed an Anrad with the Conservation Commission?
Yes, we have, and that's been approved.
And that's been approved?
And the documents were submitted as part of the preliminary plan.
And-
That's in your package.
All right. And where is the sixty-five-foot and hundred-foot reflected in regards to the subdivision road? What page?
Be free to cancel my printer request.
Be on page five, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
One of the houses is my laptop again.
So the proposed structure is to be within the hundred-foot wetland buffer?
Yes.
I'm going to have concerns with that.
Well, we, you know, we could push that house outside the, but it's, it's not necessary.
This is, again, this is for our definitive plan, a roadway plan. This is not approval of a house or a site plan.
Well, you're, you're, right, and you're providing us with the potential site plan.
Yes.
And I'm telling you that I'm going to have concerns with anything inside the hundred-foot-
Well, if it's not in the- And I would disagree that we have a right to show that as it is.
No, no, you have a right to show, I'm not saying not, I'm saying that you have the right to show the potential house, and thank you for doing that. It's, it's part of your responsibility. I'm just saying that, and you're looking for input for a definitive plan.
Yes.
And I'm telling you that I am going to have concerns with that.
And I'll do everything I can to get all work outside a hundred-foot buffer, Mr. Chairman.
And I, that's all I'm asking. I appreciate, because there's a lot of room here to work with, so.
Yeah.
I'm just looking for the effort. And then again, it is, it's for two houses, and it's recommended possible waivers in regards to street width sidewalks and the cul-de-sac layout in regards to this.
Yeah.
I'm not, again, I'm just saying this is a recommendation-
Right.
From, from him, because we, part of our job is to reduce the impacts in regards to these projects, and that's why I was asking you to say, why are we putting in a, a two-lane road with sidewalks and everything?
You know what I mean?
Well, the pipes will rust before you put water in them, won't they? You're going to put a pipe under the ground for the next forty, fifty years?
Yeah.
They'll come along and try to put water through, and they won't work anyway, will it?
I think that came up in previous submissions to this board, and I think it was, it was suggested that we might do that as a, as something that the town may have water mains in the future, so this is all set up and ready to go.
Yeah, okay.
You have a question, Mr. Dion?
What's that gray? Is that the water main, or is that-
Pete Dion, that you left.
Five of six?
So if you go to six of six, Sir Richard, there is a, shows, shows a little more, it's, it's a bit clearer in terms of the water line and the, the gas line. On the right, on the right figure.
Handicap ramp. Oh, it's the handicap ramp?
There's a handicap ramp, yes, in a sidewalk, a four-foot sidewalk.
Why, why is it only halfway? Wouldn't you go around the whole thing?
If it gets to both houses, why wouldn't you go around the whole circle?
Well, it's short its distance, so if I'm on the farthest side of the house, I got to go all the way around that circle.
Well, great. Again, if we were looking for convenience, we'd be putting in, we'd be looking towards a shared driveway or something along those lines.
I have a marketing question, and you, I, I'm going to buy a house in Carver. I look at this, and it says, you know, new house, but you got to buy eighty acres of cranberry bogs with it?
It's a good deal.
All right. Yeah, I wouldn't be in the cranberry business.
So, and also I'm looking at roughly thirty, thirty feet of grading in regards to this? Is there any way to limit that?
Thirty feet of grading.
Is that what I'm-
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I can speak to that.
Okay.
Andy Glines, Fuston O'Neill, specifically regarding that item, although their plan and profile shows a significant amount of grading, I did note that that's through existing soil stockpiles at that location and not natural hills that they're cutting through, so it wouldn't have the same amount of disturbance.
How would you determine?
Well, so it's, it's, as I understand, the applicant can confirm their, their soil, it's material that has been already moved and stockpiled at that location, not a vegetated hill. So I used aerial imagery to determine that, but it wasn't clarified in the application package.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Right, because I was looking at thirty feet of earth removal in regards to this, and I wouldn't know otherwise.
All right. Any further questions or comments from the board? Seeing none. The Chair will accept a motion to approve.
There's no hearing for a preliminary plan. But good to keep, we sometimes forget that thing, so it's good.
The, sorry. The Chair will accept the motion to approve the preliminary subdivision plans of Johnson Brothers Cranberries off Fosdick Road, assessors map fifty-sevens, lot one and two A, map fifty-eight, lot two and eight in a residential agricultural district.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Gasky.
Second.
Second by Ms. Sardillo. Do we have further discussion amongst the board?
I have a question for Ms. Bott.
Sure.
Is this one of these situations where we consider the area within as cul-de-sac for bio-retention that we talked about earlier tonight with the woman discussing areas for improvements?
Yes, that's an excellent application for cul-de-sacs, putting drainage in there, bio-retention areas, and minimize the amount of pavement. Kids love a cul-de-sac that they can skateboard and basketball all over. Most of us prefer to have something vegetated at the end in order to allow that stormwater to infiltrate in, in a properly designed stormwater, bio-retention area or something like that. And based on not being an engineer, like either of these two folks, it's conceivable that you could store, or deal with a significant amount of the stormwater in an area like that versus a traditional retention or retention basin.
Thank you, Mr. Plann.
No further questions, comments, or discussion? Mr. Dion.
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sardillo says aye.
I have a lot of reservations and think this could be done a lot better, but Kenny Shea will say aye till we see a more definitive plan in regards to this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, thank you.
So I'm driving. Thanks. One moment, please.
Take your time.
All right. This is, Andy, you provide a comment in regards to this?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Very recent, well.
We've never seen any comments.
No, that's, that's okay. I only, I haven't even had a chance to read them. We just received them at the beginning of the meeting, so I haven't had a chance to look at them. Our next order of business is preliminary subdivision plan Route Forty-Four Development LLC care of charter, three dash four park Ave, assessors map twenty, lot two R, fourteen R, twenty-one R, mapped twenty-two, lots eleven R, three A R, three R, three one R, three B, four, five A, ten, ten-one, and mapped twenty-four, lot one and two, new road subdivision, Route Forty-Four Development LLC zoning district, highway, commercial, and green business park? Didn't, I thought we put the last parcel into the green business park at the town meeting. Did we not?
There are, there are still some highway commercial on the site.
Okay. All right. If you would introduce yourselves?
Sure. Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. I am Zach Richards with Bowler Engineering on behalf of the applicant, and with me tonight is Susan Murphy with Dane Torpe.
Also with us tonight is Robert Delk from Route Forty-Four Development.
I mean, I was going to keep it pretty brief. It's another preliminary subdivision. You have seen two now tonight. We were here presented initially and ran through overall scope of the project and the plans at our first hearing on May ninth. At that point, there was some initial feedback and questions from the board. We've since prepared and submitted a letter from Dane Torpe addressing some of those questions, and we're here tonight for any additional feedback on the preliminary subdivision in order to incorporate that again as part of the definitive subdivision and look forward to advancing, you know, the definitive subdivision into the fall and working with the planning board as the project advances. Happy to run through any of the plans and more details, utility overview, again, if helpful, but wanted to, again, be respectful of your time.
Do you have a current Anrad?
We do have an Anrad. We're planning on updating that this, this summer into the fall ahead of the definitive filing.
The last one expired in 2019?
Correct.
So you don't have one, correct?
I believe there, there's an order of conditions that's active. Have to look back and double-check, but I believe the Anrad has since expired.
All right. All right. I don't believe this should be in front of the planning board. It does not conform with the approved project at the urban renewal site through the housing development. There are certain requirements, and of which you'd agreed to in the U R P, that have not been met. And first of all, a joint meeting between the R D A and the, the planning board to discuss any potential changes, and this is not a standard subdivision because it falls under the housing department. A lot of studies were done in 2016. This is not the project the planning board voted for or agreed to in 2016, and it is outside of what has been approved under this plan. Now, we'd love to help you with this, and to do that, we're going to have to have a joint meeting with the R D A to discuss it and put together a packet and send it in to the development agency, which put in a lot of time, money, and is invested in this project in regards to any modifications to it. It was what was agreed to by you and the town in the U P R, and state law seven sixty twelve point three, as well as the U P R clearly outlines any modifications to this project. This should not be in front of the planning board. The application was incomplete, and the appropriate procedures were not followed in regards to this.
Mr. Chair, may I respond?
Pardon?
May I respond? To your comments, please?
This, these are the, you've already responded, you-
No, but Mr. Chair, you just made a, a lot of statements, all of which I believe are incorrect.
You, you, so this project is reflected in the already agreed-upon urban renewal project? It's inside the final U R P that's, that's on the R D A website, because it's not?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, there is the, there was a meeting in March, I believe it was March thirteenth, but it was somewhere in March where the Carver Redevelopment Authority discussed this in detail. Mr. Bott was present at that meeting. I have reviewed the entire tape of that discussion, which was lengthy, in which the Carver Redevelopment Authority understands, as does the Department of Housing and Community Development, that a subdivision is not a project under the urban renewal plan. And in fact, in my letter, I quote specifically from the U R P that states that the assembled site will be subdivided into new parcels that will reflect the optimal use of the site as a whole in the context of the demands of the marketplace. And it goes on. I don't have to reread it. It's all in the letter that all of you received. The, a subdivision plan is, does not constitute a change to the U R P. In addition, with respect to Anrad, your subdivision rules and regs might ask for a Anrad, but Massachusetts law, definition of a preliminary plan, does not require one, and Massachusetts case law is clear that only the items specifically listed in the definition of preliminary plan are required. So right now, on March thirtieth, a preliminary subdivision plan application was filed. It complied with the state statute, and it created a freeze. And in seven months, regardless of what this board does with this application, within that seven-month period, a definitive plan will be coming, and there is no requirement that the applicant get any sort of further approval from the C R A or a modification of the U R P in order to do that.
Your U R P that you signed requires a joint meeting for any modifications in regards to this with the R D A and the planning board. First of all, that has never happened. Any modifications on this project, and this is a modification to the project, must go through seven sixty CRM twelve oh three through the housing and development. Your application was incomplete. Our, our preliminary subdivision bylaws, as approved by the Attorney General, require an Anrad to be, require an Anrad to be as part of this.
Your rules and regulations are not approved by the Attorney General. They are adopted by this board, and they cannot exceed what is required under state law.
Oh, no, they, they, they can exceed what is required under state.
The subdivision rules and regulations cannot exceed what is required under state law. In addition, the case law is clear that as long as the subdivision plan meets the definition of preliminary plan in the statute, that nothing further can be required.
Yes, but we're not requiring it. The housing and development is. This is not a subdivision under, general subdivision. This is under an urban renewal plan. This project is under an urban renewal plan and is subject to the terms that were agreed on by the town and Route Forty-Four Development. This is a modification to that project. This project, according to the U P R, encompasses all three hundred and one acres. project, according to the UPR, encompasses all 301 acres. Unless you're going to do what was agreed upon in the urban renewal plan, then you have to go back for a modification, and that's gonna require a joint meeting between the RDA and the planning board, as well as notification of under 760 CMR 1203 to the housing and development. That, we, we shouldn't even be looking at this. The state, everything that's on that and all of, everything that's been studied and put on the urban renewal plan was extensively done in regards to the project proposed. You are now requesting to change that project. Are the utilities on site? Is the water on site? Has the wastewater treatment plant been done? No, because you're looking to add septic systems in here, which is a modification also to the approved wastewater treatment plant in regards to this. Has water storage tank been provided?
Mr. Chairman, you, I believe that you, with all due respect, have a fundamental misunderstanding of what a urban renewal plan is and what this plan says and does. And we have heard you and your comments tonight, regardless of what this board does. You can approve it, you can deny it, you can reject it, although there's case law that says rejection is not an option for a planning board under preliminary plans. However, you can do whatever you want regardless. On March 30th, the preliminary plan was filed. Within seven months, a definitive plan will be filed regardless of what this board does tonight, in accordance with Massachusetts law and consistent with the urban renewal plan. My client signed the development agreement, not the urban renewal plan, they don't sign that, signed the development agreement with the CRA in April of 2016 for over seven years. Route 44 Development has worked collaboratively with this town and with all the departments and boards and agencies of this town, and it's disappointing that this is the position that you are taking today after how collaboratively they have worked with this town for over seven years.
We're here to work with you and get this done.
It doesn't sound like it.
But, oh, well, you, there is an approved plan on file that this town approved. The planning board approved it in 2016. It's, it's listed, and the CRA has to review proposals jointly with us. That's never happened. I, I think, I think maybe we all need to re-review it because I have my notes here too, and my notes say that you are not following the agreed upon process for this town, for this development, and that any changes have to go through the housing, housing. I do not believe this should be in front of us. I do not believe that you are following or in you are, you're outside of what, what we've approved, what, what the town went through seven years ago, what the state went through. The state's invested heavily. There's a lot of requirements listed in the UPR that just haven't been met, and you're asking
To do with actual projects. If they were coming in front of you for a special permit for a particular building, for a particular use, all of those steps, in fact, whoever was developing that site would have to have a separate development agreement with the CRA before that happened, and it would get into all of that traffic and utilities and wastewater and all of these issues. You do not have a project in front of you. You have a preliminary, not even a definitive, a preliminary subdivision which the URP, which I just quoted from, anticipates happening and not as a change to the URP. So, Mr. Chair, I don't, I don't wanna be repeated and repetitive and belabor the point.
Because roadways and infrastructure are required for this project before any sort of development in this. It, it went through the state as a blighted area and under, under the state, under the state laws, and, and actually you sent, you actually sent me one of the letters here in your response that clearly states that any modifications must go through DHCD.
No.
Reviews each urban re, DH, this is directly from her.
Right.
And this is, I believe it's 760 CMR 12.3. DHCH reviews each urban renewal plan change request on a case-by-case basis. The regulations require a detailed description of the change and the purpose and effect of the plan change on project activities. DHCD would look for a request for a major or minor plan change to provide information in accordance with Regulation 760 CMR 12.3, a few excerpts below, which define what a minor or a major, major plan change is.
Right, exactly. And a minor plan change is one that does not significantly affect any of the basic elements, and the basic elements are acquisitions not affected, characteristics not affected, objectives.
That's not true.
All of these items are not affected by a subdivision plan, which the URP specifically states is contemplated, and it's right in the URP at page 37. The assembled site will be subdivided into parcels that reflect the demands of the marketplace. And so, this subdivision, it may be this subdivision, it may be a further subdivision, it may be an alternative subdivision. It's all intended as an urban renewal plan to respond to the marketplace and what the demands of the market in order to create economic development for the town of Carver. And every change in the size or shape of a lot by a subdivision plan, which is contemplated by the URP, does not constitute a change of the URP. But I've, I've stated that multiple times, so.
Editorial comment. You have mentioned the planning board. At this point, it's the chairman's view. It has not been determined that this is a planning board.
Right.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for that kind of clarification. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Let's see. Please, Mr. Bott.
So, as I explained at the, at the regional development, the redevelopment authority meeting, there is a, a difference between a project, which is what the URP is, and a subdivision plan. As we've talked about earlier tonight, subdivision plans are not discretionary in front of the planning board. If someone was building a project, if someone was putting warehouses in buildings and things like that, we'd be talking about a URP. What we're talking about is a preliminary plan, which is required for an industrial subdivision, followed by a definitive plan within seven months. We have been conflating at times a subdivision plan with a project, and the two are separate. I will request town council, I'll request the town administrator access to town council to prepare a memo on you for this to give you some comfort level. But a subdivision plan is not a project, and a project is not a subdivision plan. Subdivision plan is required to put a roadway and infrastructure in to create frontage for lots, and that is the sole purpose of a subdivision plan. At some point in the future, someone will come back and wanna develop these three lots, and as they do, they'll have a plan for the planning board. But at this point, and so then I will request the town administrator to allow town council to put a memo together to give you some comfort on this. But this is like, exactly like the other plans we've seen tonight. It is a preliminary plan, followed by a definitive plan. It is not a project, and does not require any amendments to the URP. Based on my understanding and my discussions with council previously, but it can have something put together to bring you some comfort level for that.
Well, I mean, a wastewater disposal will be onsite treatment plants with groundwater discharge.
This is a subdivision plan that shows a road and the drainage in three lots. That's all this is.
Right, and, and it's
It's not a URP. It's not a project. It's not a wastewater treatment plant. It's not a, it's not a water tower. It's none of those things. It's a preliminary plan to identify where the street's gonna be.
We should, yes, and it should've, it should've gone through the proper channels, and it hasn't. There has been no meeting between us and the RDA. We've had no official notification that any of these proposed modifications have gone through the proper channels.
As I said, I'll request town council to get you something to
I have the opinion of council from the UPR that reflects definite local objectives, respecting appropriate zoning land use restrictions, design control, and there's a whole section in the URP on that, improve traffic infrastructure, development and growth. It's, the URP, the URP includes appropriate provisions describing real properties, spot clearance, rehabilitation, modification, and improvement, and includes appropriate provisions for imposition of controls and other requirements of the URP on such real property. It includes sufficient provisions regarding the duration of the controls of the proper mechanisms to make amendments to the approved URP, and all such provisions are legally adequate. That, that's from KP Law. It's attached to the, the URP. The development agreement. What do we got here? In accordance with an approved plan, the terms of such development agreement and are responsible, reasonable instruments required by the authority to ensure such use, which development is proposed by the developer will create a site with sufficient critical mass for a viable business park and construct improvements necessary to support redevelopment activities, including new public roadways, utilities, landscape, infrastructure for the ultimate creation. We're only in phase two of this project. Phase one was to acquire property. Phase two is to provide the infrastructure. That, has that been done as, as defined by the agreement, by, by what you agreed to under the URP?
The first step is a subdivision, and that is contemplated by the URP. Already, it is in the plan, as I have read twice.
Yes.
And that is the first step, and that does not require the CRA to weigh in, and it doesn't require a modification of the urban renewal plan. It, this is the plan, not the preliminary plan. This is the plan that they're referring to, not the plan of the land on paper with a roadway on it.
The URP does say that more subdivisions, or not more subdivisions, but more development may come in the future, but it also requires joint meetings between the, the RDA and the planning board, and it, and it requires any modification to what is approved, and unless what you're showing me is already approved on the URP, is a modification. And in my considered opinion, is a major modification to the plan.
The design review process is on page 51. The CRA shall review and approve all redevelopment projects for the design review. That is for actual buildings with driveways and parking lots, and that is what the CRA review process is. It's the redevelopment projects. They don't review subdivisions.
Are you, are you putting in septic systems? That's what's proposed.
Septic systems are not applicable to subdivision approvals.
Right, but it is applicable to the URP because they require wastewater treatment plant.
Right, so when Route 44 Development or one of its prospective buyers is gonna come forward and proposing wastewater at that point in time, that conversation will be had.
You're required to put, put these in as, as part of the phase, to bring in. Are you gonna put in the road that, that, to the specifications and where it says it is?
There is no, has this board approved a subdivision plan for this land? Is this, does it, are you saying that this plan substitutes this board's review of a subdivision road, and they can build whatever is shown in here without your approval? Is that what you're saying?
No, because that's not what the URP says, is it?
No, exactly what I've been telling you. That's not what it says.
I believe it's a modification that shouldn't be in front of the board. That's my personal opinion. I don't think we're following the appropriate channels. The state and the taxpayers, every taxpayer in this state of Massachusetts has invested heavily into this project. And it's been, what's been approved has been approved, and any modification to that, any change from what has been approved, has to go through the proper channels.
Which is exactly what we're before the planning board doing, and we would ask the planning board to act on the preliminary plan. That's our request to the board.
Do any of the members have any questions?
I have a bunch, but it'd take all, all night. I'm just a little confused with some of this, to be honest. Let me ask Mr. Bott. So, they put that intersection in to do a big building in there. So they had to get approval from the state for more or less
Warehouse.
For warehouse.
Yeah, yeah. So, the redevelopment plan, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So, the person that was gonna do the warehouse pulled out, the plan still sits there. Now, they wanna put a plan on top of that plan. That's what we're trying to get at, is how can you do that?
So, they
In the first plan, it says, in order to do anything, they wanna put all the utilities in first. So I think what Mr. The Chair is saying is, they wanna do a subdivision approval, but it says all utilities must be in there before, prior.
So, the urban redevelopment plan is for building basically the industrial park, for putting in buildings and all that infrastructure have been talked about previously. All of that is exactly where it was before. There's been no change to that, but nobody's building anything there. So, the only thing that's in front of the board right now is a subdivision plan, and the subdivision plan is not a redevelopment project. It's a subdivision plan. It is required under state law. It's not discretionary by the planning board. The people come in and say, here's where the roadway's gonna be, here's where the frontage is gonna be, here's where the drainage for the roadway is. Those are the things that are in front of the board. Building warehouses, buildings, all those trips, all those traffic is not what's before the board. It is a subdivision plan. And as I said, we'll have, I'll, I'll request town council's access to prepare a memo for you to get you folks some directions, some comfort for what we got going on.
So what I'm saying is, you already had a plan, and they decided not to build, so you can throw another plan on top of it.
A subdivision plan is not an urban renewal plan. It's, they're, they're two different things. They're, they're two different things that we're talking about. One is the subdivision plan, which is roads, drainage for the roads, the urban renewal plan, which require a site plan approval and a special permit by the planning board. That is what falls under the urban renewal plan. What's in front of the board tonight, much like the other preliminary plans are, we wanna put a road in here, this is the drainage we're gonna need for that thing, and that is the extent of the subdivision plan.
Well, see, that's why I think where Mr. Chair is, it's like, you're supposed to put a waste treatment in there. So if you're gonna put all that in there, why isn't it gonna be connected to the waste treatment plant in there? Why would you do a separate septic system and all that stuff in there? So, I, I kinda understand where he's going with that. So
Like I said, we'll get something from town council to give you guys some comfort on that.
I would like something, yes, if possible.
I, I believe that's in, I, I would be surprised if the town administrator said, no, you can't ask town council a question. Yeah, so we'll have some, we'll put something together for you, get you some comfort on that.
Yes, I, I would like to speak to Amy to discuss my concerns.
Sure.
I, I don't think
And we're not lawyers.
Right.
And we're just trying to do the right thing.
No, I appreciate that. I do.
And that's my concern, is I don't see how, you know, that's like me buying a lot, saying I'm gonna put a house in, and then they go to the board and go, hey, we're gonna put, you know, a cul-de-sac in there, and I'm building my house. So, I'm like, whoa, wait a minute. That's kinda what I'm understanding is, it was already approved for one thing, they're not building it, but the plans are still there, and now you're gonna throw another set of plans in there.
That, but
And, and it's telling, the, the whole town voted on it to put utilities and everything in there, and there's nothing in there yet.
Yeah.
And yet, we wanna put something in.
Yep, I understand that this is, having a URP is more complicated, has more layers to it than the typical development, and I understand, and I appreciate, and I hope that the town administrator will accept Mr. Bott's request, that town council can explain it, because I understand that I represent the developer and not the town, and I'd be, you know, glad to have town council
We're not lawyers, we're not specialists.
Yep, I appreciate that, sir.
Protect our town and do the right thing.
I appreciate that.
And I'd rather get a little more information on what Mr. Chair and what you argued about, and let
Discussing.
The side.
Discussing.
What's going on, yeah.
We're having a robust discussion, yes.
Because if I was a lawyer, I wouldn't be here.
And And, and Mr. Glein states, you should have the information for the upland, wetland areas proposed for each lot, and there should be a current N R A in regards to this property. You may not think it's, it's required, but the board does. The board has requested repeatedly, over and over, identifying the areas of resource delineation as an important part, an aspect of our job, and information we require to make an informed decision.
And that will be shown on the definitive plan when it's filed.
So your application is incomplete without-
It is legally incomplete.
It is legally incomplete.
It is legally complete, according to mass general laws.
According to the bylaws of the town, did you provide the upland and wetland areas for each proposed lot? Did you, did you apply for an N R A?
We provided the upland and, and, and wetland areas for, for the overall property.
For the overall, all right. So I think we'll have to continue this until such a point as we have a chance to-
Yeah, it's not here, sorry, it's not here. Well, the town council, we need the town council from you.
Thank you, and we'll take it from there.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Just, just so you know, you seem to think that I'm very upset with this development, that that's actually as far from the process I want to see this development. That is a very important development for North Carver, and I wanted to see it proceed, but it needs to proceed legally and through the proper channels.
And that's all we're trying to do.
And that's all we're trying to do.
And, and that's exactly what the applicant's doing. I'll also note that the statute anticipates-
I disagree.
-a 45-day review process for preliminary plans, we're now at day 75, so we would-
Well, if your application had been complete, and we're giving you time to finish completing your application-
It is complete, there will be no further submissions on behalf of the applicant. It is complete, it complies with state law, and the applicant will be, will be submitting a definitive subdivision prior to seven months from March 30th. So that's where we are. Thank you. Thank you for your time tonight, everyone.
Our next hour order of business is town planner notes.
So I believe in your packet, you have a memo from me regarding priority development areas and priority resources. So, in 2017, working with Serpents, the town developed a map of priority development areas.
Where? Mr. Bott, if I may, did, I think we skipped something.
Covenant form?
Oh, sign.
Sign the covenant?
Give speed covenant.
Yeah, that's a reminder just for us to sign the covenant.
I have that here.
So, so in 2017, and we'll, and we'll get that signed, well, it's the decision exploding. So-
I, I haven't, I haven't ready it. Oh. Oh, thank you. I'll sign that now.
Do you find, Joe, Joe put it in his book, I'm not exactly sure where it is.
Yeah, I, I haven't-
I didn't see where it was, so.
Yeah, I, I don't have anything-
Mine was on my desk when I showed up.
So in 2017, the town developed a list of priority development areas and priority preservation areas. Serpents is in the midst of updating that on a regional basis and working with each of the towns, and they have requested us to put together a working group to spend about half a day, four hours or so, looking at maps and data and, and things like that to help us better identify both priority protection areas and priority development areas. So what I'm looking for from the select board, from the R D A, from the planning board, and from the conservation commission, are two members of each of those groups to sit with us and wonk out on data and maps for about four hours and identify these areas. That draft of those areas will come back to a public meeting later on in the fall in order to formalize those priority development areas and those priority development areas. So we are looking to do that meeting sometime in July, so we can, you know, certainly decide who might have an interest in doing that, but that is one of the projects we've got coming up this summer. Second thing I wanted to talk about, no, you're not, I, I can't hear you.
Do you need a, is an associate member?
An associate member is more than able, and more than capable, I would venture to say.
Well, having pointed many military maps for areas to bomb, I think I could find an area to save.
You had, you had, you had mentioned you worked with a lot of maps in, in your games with the Army. We would not be bombing to bomb particularly the priority preservation areas, though that's-
Yes, for our areas.
We'll keep, we'll keep, we'll get you some guardrails on this, Don, make sure that, but yeah, that's, that's the gist. So we're going to spend about half a day looking at this stuff, developing the list of maps for a public meeting in sometime in the fall.
Thank you.
The other project that we've got coming up that the select board just entered into is an update on our housing production plan. So the housing production plan that we have done in 2010 and in 2017, both of those have expired, they have a five-year shelf life on them. And the essence of the housing production plan is to identify where housing should be, could be, and strategies to get to that. With a priority, with a housing production plan in place, it's approved by both the planning board and the select board, it gets sent to the state, who will likely approve it, because we do them as the state requires it. At that point, with a housing production plan in place, if we actually had production of affordable units, it would allow the town to have some opportunity for safe harbor for any unwarranted 40Bs. So that is why most people do housing production plans, but frankly, Carver has not seen a 40B. I think one was proposed in 2016. So while it provides a safe harbor, we haven't really seen any production, we haven't seen any 40Bs, so this is more of an exercise in planning what the future should look like, where we should put those sort of things at. And it usually takes, the first time we did it in 2010, I mean, in 2007, plan was done in 2007, approved in 2008, and then effective in 2009. I expect this timeframe to be quite a bit shorter because we're updating the information we already have, and some of the information actually from the PDAs and PFAs will actually help with that sort of process as well. So we are engaged with, with Serpents on the housing production plan, and you'll hear more about that as we move forward that. And those are the two things that I had to mention, other than, we've got a couple of things, holidays coming up. You may know tomorrow is Flag Day, the 14th. You know, it's not a national holiday, but a lot of people are very passionate about the flag, and it's always a good time to sort of look at what flag etiquette is and when you should take care of your flag and how disposable a flag, and just general care and respect for the banner. The other holiday that's coming up is Juneteenth. So Monday, the 19th is Juneteenth, how town hall be closed? It's a federal holiday, it's a state holiday, and Juneteenth, as you probably know, commemorates when the Emancipation Proclamation was finally enacted in the state of Texas, two years after it was signed by Lincoln in Galveston. It's a very interesting story, but it's a great time to sort of reflect on, you know, just how far and how many things have changed in the country over the 250, 49 years that we've been here. So it's a great take. I'm fortunate to have the day off, so I'm going to Grant's home in upstate New York and check out the Juneteenth celebration, because U S Grant, as you know, was very instrumental in reconstruction after the Civil War in trying to ensure that the cause of the battles of the Civil War were able to be maintained by the populace, unfortunately they weren't. But, so Juneteenth is a really cool holiday, it's new to us, and lots of folks don't know about it, but there'll be plenty of programming about it in lots of different places. That's what I got.
Thank you. It, it had been on my mind, but it, it had escaped it also, and-
There's a lot, there's a lot to keep up with. We had a big meeting tonight, there's a lot to keep up with, so I, so anyhow, when we've got a couple of folks who have had, have an interest in this, just shoot me an email. If I got five of you who want to do this thing, then we'll, you know, we'll figure out how to draw straws for that. But I think that first priority is identifying those folks who are interested in working on the priority development areas and priority protection areas.
Wasn't there mention of a bicycle committee also, or the Serpents, is that further down the road?
We used to have one.
I, I actually got a, on my list of things that I've talked to the select board about is also the, an update on the regional bicycle plan. I actually got an email about that today. I went to a retirement party a couple of weeks ago for Bill Napolitano, an extraordinary human being in ways you just cannot imagine, what a, what an extremely impressive individual Bill Napolitano is. Retired after 38 years with Serpents, and as planners like to do, we had a, an event for him at a place that was a brewery. Planners believe in hydrating, and at that meeting, I met a lot of the folks at Serpents who I have emails with and things like that, so amidst saying nice things about Bill, we also conducted a little business like the regional bicycle plan. So I'll be looking at updating the regional bicycle plan and looking at proposed potential bike routes. I know you're a cyclist.
I served on a committee in Pembroke one time, so I'd be happy if you need somebody.
Yeah, and a lot of committees that we've got are, have been sort of dormant for a while, in fact, discussing with the select board about the H P P. One of the things I suggested is maybe we want to look at reinvigorating the, the Affordable Housing Partnership that has last met in 2015. So as we work through the various plans that are typically required or recommended for communities in Massachusetts, we're updating a lot of those, and some of them require, you know, sort of reactivating some of those things that have been dormant for quite a while.
Well, as long as we're here, should we ask for volunteers for, to sit on the committee for priority protection areas and priority development areas?
I wouldn't fight you on that for a hard, you know, hard, not a-
Do we have any volunteers from the board that want to sit on the priority development, priority protection areas, people that have strong opinions on what should be saved and, and what needs to be developed in this town?
As I said, I have time for that.
So, Mr. Williams, do we have any other volunteers? I'm sorry, did you raise your hand? No.
Nope, no, I'm, I'm pretty solid right now.
I will volunteer then unless another candidate decides to step up, and then we have the housing production plan, separate.
We don't have a committee for that yet.
Okay.
No action on that. I just want to let you know that it is in the works, and we'll, what I recommended to the, the select board was to put together a committee for that as well, and likely compose the folks who might be on that reinvigorated housing partnership.
All right. And when are we looking to discuss the changes in regards to the stormwater prevention plans presented earlier today?
I've been, like I said, keeping a, sort of a, a running sheet of some of those changes, so that would likely be a hearing that we would have in the fall, just because of the time it takes to, to sort of ferret through those things and advertise them. It's not town meeting, it's the planning board, so the planning board can create their subdivision regulations in compliance with the state general law, based on a hearing. So we'll look at some of those things, likely closer to the fall.
All right. Apparently, Mary Ann noticed that on A and R number one, on May 9th-
Are we talking about minutes now?
No, that I did not participate in the roll call vote, and she was unsure how to record this, so I think it has to be recorded as abstention.
So we're talking about minutes?
Oh, is it part of the minutes?
I, I don't know where your comment came from, that's why.
I, I received a note from Michelle, from Mary Ann, it just says, do you have the, not inside of there?
I got three sets of minutes in my-
I'll, I'll have to go and see which A and R it was, I'm guessing it's the A and R. So we got preliminary subdivision, no, it must be the 425.
Yeah. I don't, I don't have that one, 20.
We handled like three, four A and Rs on 425, I think, and I think on number one, maybe I forgot to vote, but I think it should be listed as an abstention.
Okay.
All right. Everybody had a chance to look over the 425 minutes? So the chair will accept a motion to approve the minutes of 425, 2023 as amended?
I make said motion.
Motion made by Ms. Sardillo.
Second.
Second by Ms. Tagatsky. Discussion? Mr. Dion?
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sardillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye.
Was that 425?
That was 425 with the abstention edit there.
Right.
The chair will accept a motion to approve the minutes of 59, 2023 as edited.
I make said motion.
Motion made by Ms. Sardillo. Second by Ms. Tagatsky. Further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Dion?
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sardillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you very much, and Don, thank you for volunteering. The chair will accept the motion for adjournment. I think that covers everything.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Tagatsky, second by Ms. Sardillo.
Hard to make emotions.
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky, aye.
Kevin Robinson, aye.
Ellen Sardillo, aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you all very much.
Have a good night.